It is 7:00 PM, so it's time for us to start. We have a quorum here. All council members are present. We want to welcome you out to the Highland City Council meeting. We will begin our city council meeting by having an invocation by council member Brittany Bill, following the Pledge of Allegiance, be by himself. So Brittany.
Our dear Father in heaven, we're so grateful tonight for the ability that we have to all meet together and to talk about the needs of our residents and of our city. And we pray that we will have thy Spirit to be with us throughout this night, that we will be able to listen and make good decisions. And this we ask for in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
We now have time set apart for public appearances. Want to kind of let you be aware of the items that will probably be discussed as with a, we'll invite the public to come up will be item number three, which is a text amendment to the freestanding signs. We'll have a public hearing. We will also have open it up for a discussion when we talk about the trail systems. If you're here on any other item, I'd invite you to come up at this time during our unscheduled public appearances. And please state your name, please.
It's a great pleasure to be here. Mayor Ossler, distinguished members of the city council. It's super fun to see you. My message tonight is simple. I'm here to talk about a concern that I have that many of my neighbors in my neighborhood also share. We live on a road that for some reason tends to attract people commuting to drive very, very, very fast. We also have 27 children under the age of 14 who live within 300 feet of this curve. We're here to respectfully ask the committee and the council and you, Mayor Ossler, to consider speed bumps or some other traffic device to slow people down around that curve. And I've heard all of this before from previous members of the city council hall. The snowplow drivers don't like speed bumps because it makes them have to slow down four or five times a year when it snows. And I've also been told, oh, yeah, no problem. Just call the police. They'll come take care of it. And we can't hire more police. We love our law enforcement folks. They're doing the best they can, but they can't be everywhere. We're respectfully asking the council and you, Mayor Ossler, to consider that request. I respectfully leave that. Thank you.
Can I ask you which exact road you're discussing?
It's Yorkshire Court and Yorkshire Drive. Many of the, my neighbors are going to come and talk about this too. They can tell you the exact coordinates. If you come out in the morning time, even on Sunday morning, people going to church drive a lot faster than they're supposed to. And in the warmer months, we have lots of kids who like to walk to church too. And we also have lots of kids that like to walk to school. This past summer, I had, saw two occasions where my neighbor, they have a little boy in his, I won't say his name, but he's, how old is, how old's your wild one? Five. And he's a pretty active kid and he likes to move around. And I'm a lot like that too, but I'm not five, so I don't stay going the road. But I, he almost got hit twice. And he wasn't in the road. He was just on the sidewalk. So there you have it. Thank you for listening and sure appreciate everybody's desire to listen. Thank you.
Can you state your name for the record?
Of course. My name is Mr. Alan Renter. My address is 10224 North Yorkshire Court. Thank you.
That's exciting. We have a new mayor since I've been here. I have a baby. We have a new mayor. Yay.
It all happened.
Yeah. I know it's exciting when my neighbor, when my neighborhood shows up, huh? Okay, so I just wanted to adequately, I feel inadequate actually because I haven't prepped anything. I should have a map. I should like have better words, something. But I want to explain to you the street because I think if you don't drive it often, you don't understand. So you basically have two runways that curve. You've got really long road, curve, really long road. To these teenagers especially, they can get going like 50 miles an hour like this, no time. And the problem is it's a blind curve. There's no stop sign. There's no circle. There's nothing. And so you can go from the new construction and go all the way around her house, around the curve, and then go all the way back down to the older part of the neighborhood, never stopping, never slowing down. And that to me is the problem. It's not necessarily just that it's the speed. It's the kinds of roads that you have leading up to it and it's that, that blind turn. I think when I'm going 25 miles an hour, I think it's still too fast because it's that blind curve. And you've got Hillary's kids are, I mean, her house is, is the corner. And so it's just not conducive to little kids out playing. It just, and, and I don't feel like this is an abundance of caution. I think this is kind of just like what should be done because it's common sense. It's just whoever developed that road didn't take into consideration teenage drivers or, I really think it's a runway. That's the best word I can use to describe it. So anyway, we are appreciative of all, of all the efforts and we just, you know, driving around Cedar Hills and places like that, we know that it's possible to get around the snow plows and all of that. We just need some direction and some ideas because it really is terrifying. It really is. Thanks.
Mayor.
I'm sorry. Can you please state your name for the record? Thank you.
Could we have one of them just point on the map where the roads are concerned?
Yeah, is it, is this?
We have a map.
Is it, is it Yorkshire Court?
Right there. Yeah. Right there. That's my house. So I'm Hillary Gardner. I live 10217 North Yorkshire Court, right there. And I have, I have said this for so long. I need a speed bump in front of my house. I need a speed bump in front of my house. I go out there. I'm always going like this. Slow down. And I don't want to be that neighbor anymore that's just like chewing everyone out, but I'm going to get emotional. I, like Ellen said, I've had kids almost get hit. And so it's, is, I don't want a tragedy to be what takes action to make it, you know, to get speed bumps or something there. Because I've been chased, I've chased my two-year-old out in the road before. I mean, I have, and my house, just to kind of give you an idea, it's a central location for all the neighbor kids. And I have a lot of kids and all the neighbor kids come to my house. So it's not just my kids. It's, it's all the neighbor kids. So I'm just so terrified that someday there's just going to be a child that's pegged and killed. And also the, there's mailboxes across the street from my house. So a lot of people are there a lot of times too. But yeah, I've, I've been the one that's rallied everyone to come tonight because I, I heard that speeding in neighborhoods was a topic on the agenda tonight to be talked about. And so I thought, oh, well, let's go and, and talk about it. And I had heard, you know, that Alan brought it up, I think, I don't know, a couple of years ago, and that they gave him the, the snowplow, you know, answer. And I was just like, I don't, I don't think that's a very good argument because they're all over the place in Cedar Hills. So, and, and the type that I'm thinking of is like the big wide ones that have the sidewalk in the middle, you know, not like the ones you see that are in parking lots and stuff. So anyway, in talking to neighbors, it's a big concern for everyone, not just me, because I live right there, but everyone in the neighborhood feels the same. And even people that don't live in the neighborhood, maybe we could consider some in other areas of Highland. I had a neighbor say that since Canal Boulevard has been, you know, finished now and connects, I think on the west side of 6000 is what she was saying. I'll have to go back and look. But she said, there was a drunk driver recently, I don't know if you guys know about this, that plowed into someone's fence. And so she was like, please mention Canal Boulevard. Please mention Canal Boulevard. So why don't we just talk about speed bumps? And Alan said, when he used to live in Farmington, they had them there. And for the plows, they had like a red flag or something in the winter so that they would know where those speed bumps were. But I think if they're those big wide ones with the sidewalk, like I want two straddling my house because it's the, the straightaway and then my house is the curve and then the other straightaway. And now that it goes through to 10400, people just go zooming down. So anyway, I would love for this to happen. Like I'm, I'm really going to push for it. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Hillary. Anyone else would like to come up?
Yeah, I'm Vanessa Moody and I live on the same Yorkshire and Yorkshire Court, but it's 5747 West. So just a little bit down. I get the, the ones curving and, and flying the rest of the way and speeding up more. But yeah, I'm here today. A couple of ideas I had were just, I, I like what Hillary said about those speed bumps that are in Cedar Hills, how they're, they're a lot different than other speed bumps. They're more of a neighborhood speed bump. And I like the idea of maybe coming together and finding those spots in Highland that are more dangerous in neighborhoods, pinpointing kind of those spots. My experience, we lived over in Lehigh over by the commuter roads over behind Thanksgiving Point where it just got crazy. And we actually have worse people speeding through our neighborhood over here than over in Lehigh. So just kind of with my experience with what I've seen from Lehigh to Highland, I, I don't know if it's just like this is the day that we live in. People have faster cars. They're, they're more distracted. So I don't feel like we can really, I always get on Facebook, you know, the beginning of spring and, and like, hey, watch out for the kids. Watch out for the walkers. Watch out for the bikers. But there's only so much we can do with people slowing down with that. But I really think that if we had speed bumps, that would be something that they, they physically have to stop. They have to, or they have to slow down. So I just, I really am pushing that as well. And I've seen, so my son almost got hit over by the renters from the, the straightaway, not the curve. There's so many blind spots coming to and from. He almost got hit one day and I, I just am like, I do not want it to be a death. And that was him being 12 years old, me walking with him, watching both ways. Like I'm fearful for myself being an adult, you know, even walking through there. So anyway, I just wanted to put my two cents in and that's it.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Council members, mayor, some of you know me because we met last week and I appreciate you coming down. My name's Stephen Roberts. I live directly in the line of sight of Canal Boulevard. My neighbor was the one who lost two or three trees and half of his fence. It was accident number five, or depending who you talk to, it might have been six or seven on Canal Boulevard. So, and also I'm, I spent 23 years in Cedar Hills. So those are called speed tables. And they're, they're very legitimate. They're very valid. I lived in Cedar Hills when that controversy was happening, when they started building those. I was not for them, but I am 100% for them now. They, they, they're built in a way that it, it prevents vehicles at a certain speed with a certain wheel base from speeding. They're built specifically to allow larger wheel-based vehicles like snowplows to easily go over them at the speed that they need to go. So I'm a big fan of speed tables. Now, once again, thank you for coming down and reopening this conversation that we've had on Canal Boulevard for, oh, four or five years, I believe it is. And so, Council Member Bill, thank you for reaching out and opening up that conversation again. There are many of us who are concerned. In that one block where I live, it, it parallels, or Canal Boulevard parallels Murdoch Canal, Murdock Trail. And people have built three or four entrances to the Murdoch Trail from Canal Boulevard, just on their own. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic. There are no sidewalks on nearly a block of Canal Boulevard. And as we all know, increase, the traffic has increased, I don't know, I would say four or fivefold since I watch it all day long. And it hasn't even been built out at the end. So it's going to dramatically increase the traffic through our residential zones in southern Highland. And so I appreciate the conversation that we've had. Commissioner, or mayor, thank you for getting the wheels rolling or getting the, getting, getting things rolling there. I look forward to working with you. And I appreciate your thoughts and, and your willingness to work with us. The city mayor, who also came down and visited with us. Just wanted to put that on public record. We, we filled this, this city hall clear full of people when, when that connector was, was being proposed and built with the very concerns that are happening right now. It has increased traffic. It will increase accidents on Canal Boulevard. It's just a given. So I ask for your continued support. We're willing to help work out a solution. And again, I believe speed tables need to be considered. They're a viable option on these, on these high-traffic roads and streets. So thank you.
Thank you. Just since there've been a lot of conversations about traffic, there is an item on our agenda, which is going to be a discussion number eight about pedestrian crossing warnings and the speed signs limits. So that, some of the things that have been talked about will probably come up during that conversation. But that is item number eight, which will be at the very end of the meeting. So is there any other public comment at this time? Chris?
Hey, mayor and members of the council. This is, I'm Chris Howden. We live, Jackie and I live north of SR 92 and 6000 West. We've lived here for 26 years. And just on that little section, just so our neighbors that have participated know, we've had one girl that was paralyzed. Our daughter was hit and has permanent nerve damage. And unfortunately, even after, you know, coming up every couple of years or so, nothing really seems to be done other than, we're grateful for the police that come and, you know, park in our driveway and trap people. But I'm sure you know, the, the high speed on that section has been 107 miles an hour at 8:00 in the morning. So we do have some pretty flagrant speeding going on. And so anything that could be done, maybe, I'm sure Andy has some great ideas, but that's just from Jackie and me.
So Chris, just to kind of follow up, you're talking about 6000 West going north from SR 92 and that intersection at SR 92 and 6000 West. Is that correct?
Actually not. We live, if you go north from SR 92, so you've got the, the Longhorn Field, the Patterson Field. If you go north and you go down the dip into Dry Creek, we live in that
In the dip, yeah.
On the east side of the road. So it's a good chance for people to really, you know, gun it and see what their cars can do. But I'd prefer that they do that at 2:00 in the morning, not at 8:00 o'clock.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? If not, we'll now close our unscheduled public comment time. We will now move on to consent items. We have three consent items. Number, consent item number A, which is approval of the minutes from November 9th of 2021 and January 11th of 2022. Planning Commission appointments, which I would like to poll. And then item number 2C, which is a Plaid Amendment, the Midtown Highland Marketplace Amendment. Any others that need to be polled?
I would like to pull item one.
So you'd like to pull item 2A?
Yep.
Is there a second on pulling item 2A?
Yes.
Okay. Anything, and I'd like to pull item number 2B. Anything else? We'll wait for, is there a motion for item 2C?
Mayor, I move that we approve item 2C, the Plaid Amendment for the Midtown Island Marketplace.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Scott, seconded by Tim. That passes 5 to 0. We'll now go to Brittany, item number 2A, which is approval of the minutes, the meeting minutes.
Yeah, just one correction from last, last week's meeting on the, whenever that was, the 17th. It says, Mayor Ossler added that Highland City would like to place a water tank on the property, talking about the Equestria Park. And you actually suggested that Lehigh City would like to place that water tank, not Highland.
Correct.
That's all I had.
Okay. So that is, so amendment to those, that meant the minutes that show it was Lehigh City wanting a water tank versus Highland. Okay. And I'd like to also discuss item number 2B. If we, on number 2B, we had down some planning commission assignments. I'd like to propose that the planning commission assignments are as follows, is that we have Jay Roundy serving to fill Mino Margalos' term, that we have Tracy Hill filling as a member of the planning commission to expire in 2026, and Trent Thane to serve as alternate on the planning commission with a term expiring in 2026. I actually have two of those members here. I'd like to invite Dr. Roundy, if you would maybe come up and just introduce yourself. And then after that, we'll ask Trent Thane, excuse Dr. Hill tonight. He had a family situation arise today. So, Dr. Roundy. By the way, we had two doctors apply to be on planning commission. So I thought it was kind of, well, I actually had three and two were appointed. So, or hopefully be appointed.
And being an architect, we bury our mistakes, unlike Scott that keeps us alive. So.
So you're the doctor that buries the mistakes.
Anyway, I'm looking forward to this opportunity. And I've had the opportunity before, both as an alternate and in four years as a member of the council, and then in other cities as well. And so I've seen the results of lack of planning and bad planning and good planning. And, you know, as we've worked, I'm going to take my, my hat and hair off to Nathan, is we worked together in the past. You know, there were some good things that I saw. And I've worked with Kelly as a citizen. And, you know, she made me toe the mark. And that's just what we need. And then after talking with you the other day, one of the things that I really have to give a pat on the back to these people that come, and I don't care what their issues are, but the fact that we have an open dialogue where people can bring their thoughts and concerns so that in the end, you guys make the final decision and we have the best city possible. So I'm welcome, I'm, I'm thankful to be here. And if you have any questions, I'll take them, but otherwise, I'll be here the fourth of every month.
Any questions for Jay?
You've lived here, I think it was 24 years in Highland, correct?
Yes.
And, and he lives down, down by the Pheasant Hollow subdivision there off of Alpine Highway.
Right, right. Thank you.
Thank you. Trent?
Hi, I'm Trent Thane. I lived here in Highland right around 18 years. Lived in, within three miles of that area the last 50. So I've been around this area for a while. Really what's brought me here is interest in getting involved in the city, getting involved in organizing and having an input on changes. Been involved with Lehigh City on a few different committees over the years. And really look forward to helping Highland with their master plan, giving an input from my perspective. And yeah, that's basically it. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Maybe a little bit about Tracy Hill. Tracy Hill has lived in two different areas of Highland. He used to live up at Sky Estates and recently built a home over in the Ruby Estates. He's lived here in Highland for six years. He is a physician and on the faculty of the Nord College of Medicine, which is the new Provo Medical School that just opened, I believe this last fall. So those, if there's any of that, is there a motion on item number 2A and 2B?
Mayor, I move that we approve consent items 2A with the approval of the meeting minutes that have been corrected, as corrected. And also item 2C, or I'm sorry, 2B, planning commission appointments.
I'll second.
It was moved by Scott, seconded by Cam. Ready for a vote? That passes 5 to 0. So, in a sake of that we have several people here in the audience for item number eight, if the council's amenable, I'd like to move discussion item number eight up to now to be the next discussion item, which is pedestrian crossing warning and speed limit signs. Is that, is, will the council be amenable to that change?
Yeah.
Yes.
We will now discuss item number eight. It's on our agenda, pedestrian crossings, warning, and speed limit signs. I believe that this will be Andy that will come up and discuss this for us.
All right, council, as you've seen tonight, there's a lot of interest in the community on safety, both from a speed standpoint and also from a pedestrian crossing standpoint. Specifically, what was kind of the impetus for this item? And I apologize. Anyway, while we're getting the right map up, what was the catalyst for the discussion tonight? Some of the discussions we've had with various residents on some of the speed controlled efforts and then also, there we go. We recently received a number of requests for a lighted crossing. When I say lighted, I mean something that flashes to get pedestrians across from the Highland Main, Main Trail or the American Fork Ditch Trail where it crosses 6000 West. That's the picture that we're looking at on the screen. And if you're not familiar with this crossing, this crossing's about 1,000 feet south of Highland Elementary. And so yes, thank you, Highland Elementary is there, being highlighted. So the specific crossing that's, that's being looked at or discussed right now is, is the trail crossing. Trails shown in yellow and green on the screen. This, this particular location would be one of those locations that seems very intuitive as far as it would qualify for a sign of this type because you've got a collector's, collector road with a, you know, with a number of daily trips and you've also got a well-used trail. And so then to top that off, this cross is at a mid-block location, which is not a location that you're looking for as a driver, right? You expect a lot of the crossings to happen at intersections. And so you're crossing a mid-block crossing. This particular crossing is a little bit accentuated by some of the vegetation from the adjacent properties. So the existing signs are kind of hidden by some of the tree branches and other things. So that's one more contributor. But even with or without the, you know, the vegetation, this is still probably a location that at least in my opinion, we'd look at and say, you know, that's, that's a good use of public funds. But the, the question comes up a little bit if we step back for a minute from looking at this particular location and look at, you know, we've got a whole city that we've got to care for. And just as an example, to place, and what we're contemplating placing here called rectangular rapid flashing beacons. They're a little teeny, they're, there you go. Thank you. So it's a pedestrian crossing sign and then it's got the little square lights next to it. And they flash at you very brightly in kind of a quick pattern so that catches your eye both at day and night. And they talk to each other across the road by a Bluetooth signal. They're solar powered, so you don't have to put in power. But that's not to say they don't require maintenance. We still have to replace the batteries. We still do have to go and fix them when they don't work, et cetera. And as far as you look at the cost, if we were to just come and, we already have pedestrian crossings here, but let's say we didn't. If we were to come and install a traditional static sign, for the signs for each side, it would cost us about $300. You know, to come and install one of these is just a little over $7,000. And so you're about 23 times the cost. And in the, in the right locations, these are the right thing to do, right? You've got a number of conflicts and you want to protect your citizens and you want to get people across safely. And the, the question is, or the recommendation for the staff, both of these signs, and we'll talk about the, the solar speed signs here in just a minute, that as a city, you know, we've got this one before us where we're looking at this and we're saying, yeah, we're looking for the council for direction. The staff are saying, you know, yeah, that's probably a good location. That's, that's one of those that, you know, we haven't developed what we're going to suggest as criteria yet, but but intuitively, we're saying, you know, that would, that would pass the cut. And so, but if you back up, we're saying what we ought to do going forward is we ought to come up with a set of criteria. Simply, I don't want any pedestrian hurt. I don't want any type of incident anywhere, right? But if we've got to be a little bit realistic about it, we do have a fixed budget. And if you look at it from a maintenance standpoint, once we put in a traditional pedestrian crossing sign, short of if it gets vandalized or stolen, or the wind happens to break, blow it down, or something, something a little bit extraordinary, there's not a lot of maintenance and upkeep to it, right? We put in the sign and it's there. These, on the other hand, do require a little more continual maintenance. Like I said, you've got the batteries, sometimes electronics go out, you have to replace the light. So these are, you know, these are more of a continual item that are, are, you know, with you from, from then on going forward. Because once you put them in, you know, the public gets accustomed to them. Everybody's used to looking for the flashing lights if someone's going to cross. And so once you put them in, you're always going to have them at whatever location you put them in. And so what we think is that, at this particular 6,000 West crossing, you know, we're looking for direction with the council, but it seems intuitive to put it in there. But moving forward, we ought to, we ought to, as a, as a council and staff, come up with the criteria under which we'll consider these and which, you know, a given crossing would be eligible for this type of crossing through the city. That way, that would give us an objective criteria to evaluate, you know, various requests as we see them through time. Because it's likely that, that, once this goes in, these are really nice. These are, I'm not diminishing that they're nice, they're nice. They catch your eye once we put this one in. There'll probably be some additional requests. And some of those may be justified, and it might be the right thing to do. We're just saying, let's, you know, if we're going to go forward here, then let's take a minute and let's come up with some criteria in which to evaluate the likely future requests. So that would be the pedestrian crossing signs. The other element that we were going to talk about tonight.
Maybe before you get off this.
Oops, sorry.
When you talk about the safety, by having something that flashes, like let's say, you know, there at that 6,000 West crossing, does this, I mean, what, how, has there ever been studies by having this, it helps us on a safety scale, you know, raise it up to here? Or anything safety-wise? I mean, is it the same as not having a sign? Or is, hey, it's going to be, it alerts the, you know, the drivers? You know, what, any studies that way?
I, I'm sure there are, Mayor. I don't have the data with me tonight, but, you know, certainly the guys that sell them are going to give us the, you know, the best study the sales pitch. But I, I think we can certainly generate those as a staff. I think that I'm contented that in a high-profile crossing situation, that having the additional visibility to alert the drivers does enhance the safety. And, and I think that what we're looking at in a general sense is how often or how frequent of conflict warrants this type of investment, you know? And like I say, I say that, and I, I don't want a single person to ever get hurt at all anywhere. But if we're being practical, we can't put one of these at every single pedestrian crossing at every single corner too, right? It's that balance, and it's, it's a hard line to find. But if you'd like some data on, on the studies that have been done with these, I'd be happy to research and provide those.
So Andy, basically what you're saying is come up with a guideline policy based on simple data such as traffic, speed, pedestrian crossing, and from there, if it meets those criteria, yes, we'll put one in. If it doesn't, no.
Well, then we'll put in a more of a traditional one. Like, we're not very resistant, you know? Again, it's kind of impractical to put one of these at every single corner, right? Because you've got stop signs and other things you're expecting, you know, where you have the corners and the ramps and stop conditions, you're expecting pedestrians to cross. But in the right location, we're not very resistant to putting up, you know, traditional pedestrian crossing signs. Like I said, it's not a huge expenditure. I don't want to minimize that $300 is nothing. But i- if we're comparing it, you know, putting up a traditional sign, if there's a street that has a crossing, sure, we'll put up a sign, you know? I, I think what we're suggesting is, is these are, you know, a lot more expensive and they're with us for a long time. And so if it meets the criteria, the number of conflicts, basically what boils down is the number of conflicts between the pedestrians and the cars. And if it meets that criteria, then yeah, we'll put one in. If not, we'll look more towards a traditional crossing.
Andy, do people still use the flags to go across? Is that a thing still?
I don't see it as often anymore. It was never really in a lot of the traffic guidebooks, et cetera, as a policy. Like, I think Salt Lake really pushed it several years ago. And then you saw various communities have them, you know? And so there, you know, I don't hear them talked about as much.
We used to have some at 6,800 West. You remember there, and I don't know how the kids could cross, they had flags on both sides.
Childhood memories of the flags.
So, Andy, may I ask a question for clarification? Yeah, over here.
Sorry, we're so spread out.
Sarah in the corner.
So just a point of clarification. So you said the recommendation of staff is to go ahead with this one and then create a policy for future ones, if any? And so $7,500-ish dollars. Where will that come from? Does that work in the budget? Does, is there money available?
Yeah, it would come from our streets improvement budget, you know? You know, there's enough money that we can, we can pay for this one this year. We're able to handle this one this year.
Okay.
And, but you, you have the recommendation right. Go ahead and install one here. And, you know, and then come up with, you know, a set of criteria for which we weigh future requests. And probably, in that regard, defer future requests for long enough for us to come up with whatever that criteria is, that the council feels good about adopting its policy.
Could I ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
Number one, you said, you told us what the initial cost was for those. What do you, what can you, like, estimate that an annual cost would be for those? Like, between the battery and the maintenance? Just, I know that's a, just like a ballpark.
You know, I'm just, I, I'm shooting from the hip, but, you know, a few hundred dollars a year probably. You know, a couple, two, $300. I'm not exactly sure how much the batteries cost. I know that, you know, recently, as an example, just in the last little while, we have one of those stop signs out at 11-800 in Highland Boulevard that has the lacing of the LED lights around it, kind of the outline. I know that we had to go out and fix that light, you know, because there'd been a shortage of lights, et cetera. And so, you know, staff time and materials, you're going to spend, you know, a few hundred dollars a year.
Would it be, would it be feasible at all to, when we're coming up with our criteria, create some kind of a program where if neighborhoods feel strongly about it, they can collect money and put one up in their neighborhood? And along with that, since everybody brought it up, what about those speed tables?
Well, speed tables, I, you know, if you want to, if you want to step back from just the radar speed signs that we're talking about tonight, right?
Just seems like we should think about it all at once.
Well, and, well, that's, in a sense, what I was going to say is, is if you want to talk about speed tables, I think what you're doing is taking a step back and you're looking at, okay, what is the city comfortable adopting as a speed control program for the city, right? Again, much like, you know, these signs, I think that you have to anticipate that if you put a speed table in one neighborhood, and I have, you know, we've heard it from a number of people that would like speed tables in a couple of neighborhoods here tonight, but you put them in one neighborhood, you're going to have additional requests in additional neighborhoods, right? I mean, you're not just going to have one request, you're going to have 20 requests or 40 requests, or whatever the number is. So again, under the same auspices, what devices is the city comfortable with and comfortable with maintaining in the long term? And what are we comfortable paying to install? And then under what criteria, right? I mean, if you're going to, if you're going to develop a program of these, either, you know, talk about this, talk about the radar speed signs, or talk about speed control in general, I think you've got to develop some objective criteria whereby you say, okay, this is where we will entertain a given device and under what conditions and what type of road. And, and, you know, what, what's the checklist, so to speak, that, that, under which we're willing to both install and maintain these? And none of that, you know, is meant to minimize the value or the, you know, the fear of, I've heard several talk about that their children are already, you know, and that there've been some near misses. None of that is minimizing, because those are very real concerns. This is just simply an objective discussion to say, you know, we have a fixed amount of resources. We have conflicting needs on roads. Sometimes we need to get there really fast with our police cars or our fire trucks. You know, we have the snow plowing needs, and then we have the needs for the residents to feel safe in their homes and neighborhoods, right? And so you've got to come up with that balance. And so I think working through a program of how we're going to approach speed control as a city in general is the way that you get there. And the way that you come up with an objective way to evaluate those requests.
I love this, that he's basically, like Brittany was saying, like an all-encompassing program of basically saying, it's not just a rapid flashing beacons, but let's look at several different items that we can do. But I like this because there are so many times where residents have come and complained and said, we have an issue, and nothing's really been done. And this way, we have a program set up that says, okay, you guys are coming and saying you have an issue. We're going to go monitor it, see what criteria we can come up with, what data. And if it meets that criteria, then this is what you get. So I think that's what I foresee happening with this. And then we can basically say, because of this data shows that this, you know, safety feature is warranted in this area. I think that's a great, a great thing to do. I think my one question is, I know that reading through the agenda, we had a rapid flashing beacon where the neighborhood paid for that. Is there something maybe in the policy also that says, okay, so maybe our, our data doesn't warrant, have enough criteria for this thing? But if the neighborhood would still like to put something in, then we're amenable to that? Is, is that something that we're open to?
So what we're talking about, you know, this isn't on the agenda for tonight to talk about, hey, you know, what's our speed tables? But I think what we're hearing, what I'm hearing from the council, there might be an appetite to have a discussion, to come up with a policy that's formulated saying, okay, if there's the X number of crossings at this speed in this type of road setting, you know, would we want to have a flashing beacon? The next thing is, I think as a council, we have to have a serious discussion on, what type of speed, you know, controls do we want? I mean, in Canal Boulevard, we were looking, there is going to be, you know, we've put it where there's a trail crossing, there will be a little bit of choking there on Canal Boulevard. Are we amenable to be putting speed bumps in? Just as many of the residents say, hey, we want speed bumps, we'll have residents that come in and say, you've damaged, I've damaged my car going over the speed bumps. You know, and, and, you know, we have to be aware, you, you, you've got to be careful. That's why I think it's better to do a little bit of study, get some data, and come up with the criteria. And say, okay, if it's in this area that's having this type of speed, what do we want to try to control? You'll hear at Yorkshire Court, you know, it's in a neighborhood, it's a residential neighborhood. It's not a, that's not really, it's just a neighborhood street. It's not meant to be a through street. That might, you know, does that meet a speed bump? And that would be where the council needs to come up with some criteria, if that's where you want to put some speed bumps, or if speed bumps aren't what we want to do as a community.
And then I would love to have, public safety really likes it when there's participation in the meetings. They enjoy that. So I think they should have an input too, is, because I know one of the conversations about speed tables with, with our emergency vehicles. So when we have that conversation, I would love to involve public safety as well.
And we need public works, like you say, with snow. You need someone that's damaged their car that's went over a, as a thing. I'm sure one of the councils had that happen to them.
You need someone that speeds, I'll volunteer for that.
Yeah, so I'm just, you know, I think we're going to see this issue come back. But maybe, you know, is that a, is the council amenable to having the issue of speed tables, bumps, and things of that nature come back? Is that an item that they'd like to have come back?
Yes.
Yeah. I really like the idea of moving forward where this makes sense, where it's clear that the pedestrians, the cars aren't looking for the pedestrians. Even I've driven by there, thinking, oh, there's a, there's a runner. Man, I'm glad I saw them. And I think they're looking out for cars. So I think that makes sense, but I would really like to see the policy written up and some research, and including the speed bumps as well.
Well, I think what you've got to determine, if I put it succinctly, is you've got to determine what tools you're going to allow to be in your toolkit, and then when you're going to use those tools.
Now, let's go back to what you're talking on the flashing beacon in the packet. There was this discussion about installing one flashing beacon at 6,000 West, at the city center trail crossing. Is that something the council would rather have? A criteria that comes up to say, hey, does it meet this criteria before we install it? Or the proposal was, I think, to go ahead and install one at that crossing? What would the council like to do on that?
Can we clarify where we're talking about installing this? Because I thought we were talking about the Murdoch Canal Trail.
Well, so that's, that's your other issues. We have the Murdoch Canal Trail going across 6,000, and then we have down here by Highland Elementary, where the city center trail goes across.
This one in particular, the council member Smith, is the one that's just south of Highland Elementary on 6,000 West, so from south, 1,000 feet or so south of the elementary school, where the, where the American Fort, or River, American Fort Canyon River Trail or the Highland City Main Trail, whatever you want to call it, crosses 6,000 West.
Is that part of that safe walking route that you got the ground for? Or it's separate from that, right?
It's separate from that. This is outside the school zone. Oddly enough, we're going to extend the sidewalk, you know, pretty close to this on the west side. But this is outside the school zone, outside consideration of that study.
Mr. Mayor, you're referring to well south of Highland Elementary? And it's kind of a diagonal that goes across the road? A slight diagonal?
Slight diagonal. What, what makes this one a little tricky on 6,000 is between the vegetation and way the houses are fenced as it leads up, you don't get a lot of, as a driver moving north-south, you don't get a lot of warning, there's not a lot of visual, like, you don't have a lot of peripheral of this trail approaching, and...
No, I drive through there, I take one of my children to music lessons going on that exact route. And the people using the trail almost operate under the assumption that there is some sort of warning system for cars. There've been a few times where I thought, oh, that guy just darted right out in front of me. He could have been hit. So I, I agree that I think that particular trail is a, is a problem area. But I also wanted to bring up one other thing. We talk about prioritizing money a lot. We talk about parks, we talk about playground equipment, we talk about a lot of things. But isn't this the most important thing that we do, which is ensuring safety? I, I drove by, I empathize with the gentleman that spoke about his daughter incurring some permanent injuries. I had someone in my ward whose daughter was killed at an intersection that I think is unsafe. And then another neighbor whose daughter suffered some permanent injuries. And then another person, and then I saw my son almost get one foot away from losing my youngest because someone was texting while going through the crosswalk. I chased the car, but I didn't catch it. But, so I think we, we talk about a lot of prioritization of funds. I think this is the most important. I think we really do need to schedule a time, and I agree with Brittany, it needs to be kind of a holistic approach, not just, let's do it here, let's do it here. I agree with Brittany and Kim that we need to have some criteria on what to put where and base it on facts, instead of what I'm doing, which is an emotional approach. But base it on facts, and, and then what Brittany said is kind of a holistic thing where we have a, a policy in place and, and we approach it that way. And I think we should carve out a good chunk of time for it, if, do you agree?
And then I think Scott brings up an excellent point. We have more people crossing here at 6,000. I understand this is the, it comes to the Daimenel Church area by the days are right here. And it is a little bit of a blind area, but we also have just further down, probably maybe a half mile to three-quarters of a mile, we have the Murdoch Trail Crossing. And I know anytime I'm going down 6,000 West, maybe you can see them coming, but I always kind of just slow down anytime I see someone come up in that area. And there's been tiny, that, that's another dangerous crossing. As well as 5,600 West over here, come out of the city center, we have it up here in Highland Boulevard. Like I said, there's going to be several areas we're going to be able to point out that there might be some, you know, safety issues.
Can I make a comment? The council's quite passionate about this, and I'm glad. So I, I just wanted to ask more about the Murdoch Canal Trail Crossing there because in the other crossings in the city that are underground, this isn't. And we have lots of people that are on their bikes going pretty fast. And so they hit this road. To me, I, I think this needs to be a fair priority. But at the same time... But at the same time, um, this trail was built with MAG funds 10 years ago.
Is it the Murdoch? We're talking the Murdoch.
Yeah, Murdoch Canal Trail. Okay, Murdoch Canal Trail.
Yeah, sorry, I just want to clarify when you said MAG funds, I want to make sure we were...
Yeah, I know, we're kind of flipping between trails here, but the Murdoch, I'm kind of focused on the Murdoch Canal Trail Crossing. But, um, you know, so it was built with MAG money. It was built when I was on the council before. And, uh, we pay the county eight to $10,000 a year for maintenance of this trail. Are there any MAG funds that could help improve this? Or do, are we just responsible for paying it besides what we pay every year for maintenance?
You know, I don't want to speak out of turn, I'm happy to talk to the, to the council, I, to the council, to the county, I apologize. To the county about, uh, that crossing. But in a general sense, if I'm just a broad sweep, you know, the, uh, construction funds are spent. Now you're into maintenance dollars and the maintenance dollars are, is really going to come down to the county or us. There's not going to be any significant sums of MAG money, so to speak, for, for Murdoch, uh, at this point.
Yet that, that part there is used by many, many people throughout the county.
Correct.
Right, and I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's other source of funds there.
Most, most of the MAG monies are about either system, uh, fixing system deficiencies, et cetera, things like this. And, and again, I'm always willing to have a conversation with anybody about anything, right? And so I'm not, I don't want to close the door completely, but I want to give you my best opinion is there's going to be no more MAG funds, uh, on the, on the Murdoch Canal Trail, uh, for this type of thing. They're going to say that's, that's now the local entities to maintain, which is us or the county.
But, but we pay them to maintain it, don't we?
Right, right. And that's why I say I'm certainly willing to have a conversation with the county. And, and I don't want to say tonight, I didn't come in prepared to answer the question.
Sure, that's an unfair question, but I just...
I'm just more trying to ask, answer the question of MAG. I, I don't think they're going to get any more MAG money for it. So, so i- if something more is to be done there, it's, it's one of the two that'll pay for it, either us or the county.
So it's, it seems to me like this is a discussion that we'll have a, a committee work on and then talk about it another day. So should we, um, put together a committee and then decide what we want to do about this one?
I feel like this is something we need to have the staff come up with the criteria? Or is it something you'd like to have some in? Because Andy, it's going to really kind of fall up on, you know, you, is this something where you can come up? Or do, would you like to have some input from some council members as you're going through? That's what Commissioner Bill is talking about.
Well, I, the way I would see this going forward, um, uh, a little bit is, uh, and, and again, the, the scopes expanded a little on us tonight, right? We came in looking at the two types of signs, if you will. If we're talking a little bit of a broader, uh, discussion, I think that, uh, um, some initial discussions with, uh, either a couple of members of the council or the council as a whole on, on some of the tools that, uh, that we want to look at in our toolbox, uh, you know, is maybe a place to start, you know? And, uh, you know, and then we probably want to involve a little bit of professional help to come up with some of this criteria. But, uh, you know, even that, uh, professional team is going to want to say, okay, well, what, what tools do you want in your toolbox? What, as a community, are you willing to entertain? You know, uh, one of the most controversial's come up tonight, speed tables. You know, some communities love them, some communities, uh, don't embrace those, you know? I mean, that'd probably be on the extreme end of things, but you've got a whole bunch of tools in between, you know, a basic speed limit sign, if you want to say a basic speed limit sign, to, uh, you know, a road with numerous speed tables. Uh, you know, that does be your, you, you know, your two ends of the spectrum. And you've got about 25 different tools in between those two. And so I think that, uh, you know, discussions as to what the council would like to see in that toolbox is, is a place to start. And I think, uh, the council member Bills is in on it. There's a number of the city agencies that would like to have input on that. So I see that more as kind of starting with either a small ad hoc committee or some type of work session discussion where the, you know, we're just talking through some of those basic concepts and then refining that into a policy, uh, of sorts with some additional, you know, consultants.
What would the council like? Would they rather have some information come back from staff and have as a discussion item on the city council? Or do you'd rather have two other city council members be, you know, work with Andy? And, and then they kind of go do research and then bring it to the council? What would, what's the council's feeling on that? Is if you're asking for a committee, that means two need to get involved and get had to. It is true what, you know, council member Ball brought up. This is really kind of in our wheelhouse. This is, you know, we can talk all we want about building a park, but if we're, it's safety is really kind of in our wheelhouse.
I mean, I'm happy to help. I'm doing encroachment right now, which is super fun and parks with Kim. So if, if nobody else is willing to do it, I'm happy to help.
Would we just want to do a work session on it and just pound through it?
Pound through it. I like a work session. The staff could bring their ideas and maybe look at neighboring cities. I mean, there are speed tables on the east-west corridors you go through Cedar Hills. And, uh, it might be interesting to talk to some of the council over there. I know some of them and you know.
So, so Nathan, I think we, and I, I probably, instead of doing the thing, is this something that we can put out? I know that we have to be a little careful. We have a work session next week, but we've got to see how this, you know, fits in our schedule because we've got budgets coming up. I mean, you know, and some public safety issues and...
Right, so we'll have to, it'll probably be, uh, let's see, February, at least March, April-ish.
Yeah, this is, this is something that does take, that's why I was going to chip in is to have a really good discussion on something like this. It takes a little while to prepare even that discussion on the toolkit, right? What I'm suggesting would be a logical place for me to, in my opinion, to, to start. I, I mean, it takes a little, takes a little...
So, so let's ask about your toolkit. Do we want to put one of the tools out there as this flashing sign at one of the crossings at 6,000 West? And, and there at the, you know, coming off the city center trail and see what it's like? So we can see if this is an option that, that helps with some crossing? Or is this something you'd rather wait on even trying to do something with that flashing sign? The other one that you proposed that has a push button with the solar? Do we want to install one to see how that works? Or would you'd rather come back at the work session in March and talk about locations and the criteria before we install in?
I think installing one would give us a good idea how well they work. And I think you've got a couple of really busy places that need some help.
Yeah, I agree. I think this is a really good place to put one in, get started and then come back into the work session.
Okay, so we're talking specifically at this time, is the location we're talking about is 6,000 West? And the city center trail, just a little bit south of Highland Elementary? Is that where we have two council members? Do we have a third that's also agreeable that we would do this? You'll put one out or is it something they want to come back to work session? We need at least three to agree on that.
I have a, I have a question. Is there some sort of empirical type of data that we can gather to determine if it is effective? Or more effective as compared to the alternative, the alter- alternative method?
And I think that's kind of what the mayor was alluding to with his question too, is what studies are out there that shows, you know, how many, how much accident reduction there's been because you put in one of these, et cetera? We can do a little research on that.
I think that'd be really helpful because then we can determine if, if there is no difference between the $300 sign and the $7,500 sign, then obviously get the $300 sign, but put them everywhere.
But you can monitor speeds too, I mean, if it slows people down.
Yeah, I mean, you could...
I mean, we'd have to monitor speed and...
These particular signs, the one we're talking about with flashing, they don't monitor.
And they push and it flashes.
No, but we have equipment in the city to monitor.
Monitor, sorry, I'm just clarifying. Yeah. Clarifying there. So, I mean, uh, you know, if you want us to, uh, research what, and pick the data, we can find on this given sign.
Get back together. Is it something that we want to approve one now to get a feel? Or would you'd rather come back and have the information about this, the speed things if it helps? Or do we want to move forward with one of the signs? We had two that kind of said yes, are they still agreeable to installing a sign or would, has anything changed that way?
I'm agreeable to installing the sign now because it's, it's a school.
All right, are you still agreeable?
Oh, yeah, I'm agreeable to installing it.
Is there a third council member that's agreeable?
I'm agreeable because I want to collect data from it after we install it.
Right.
Okay, so we have three council members.
I'm agreeable too.
And four, I'm going to say we've got the council members. We'd like to move forward with one of the flashing signs, 6,000 West there, south of Highland Elementary. Now that's kind of, you got still more in your presentation to go now for some speed situation, I think that we've talked about maybe doing in Canal Boulevard, correct?
Yeah, yeah. Another, you know, on the, on the, under the same auspices as, you know, this sign at, uh, the, the main trail crossing on 6,000. Uh, as was noted in the public comments, we did meet it with a resident group, uh, on Canal Boulevard. And, uh, this would be in the section between SR 74 and, and 6,000 West. And, and we looked at that and, and, you know, similarly, oh, there's our your speed sign on our, on our, can we go back to the next photo? Sorry.
The speed sign.
Yeah, your speed sign, sorry. So similar to, uh, the pedestrian crossing on, uh, 6,000 West, that section of Canal Boulevard, uh, seems an intuitive section where a, if we do go through our criteria analysis, that would shake out and would be qualified for your speed sign, right? And so, again, we, we feel like that should go forward and we'll install that there, uh, in, in that location to help monitor and, and, uh, encourage adherence to the speed limit, you know, while we, while we figure out, uh, you know, what criteria, again, those would go in and...
And the area you're looking at is down by the Stephen Roberts home where that curvature and the, and the Canal Boulevard, correct?
Yeah, we're looking either side of that curve, you know.
That is from Alpine Highway down to 6,000. And that area where the curve is, we would be putting the speed signs down there. Now, is this going to flash if they are speeding? Does it flash their speed?
So what we're going to do on that is we, it'll, it'll tell you you're going too fast up to a certain speed and then it'll just flash at you. So that way, you know, the kids can't use it to check their, check their speedometers or how fast they can really go. They'll take some of the fun out of it and just flash at them after a certain speed. But, you know, within about 15 miles of the speed limit, it'll flash at you and tell you you're going too fast. And we have the ability to turn them off after that, kind of cap it out, if you will. So, so again, we're, we're planning to go forward, you know, provide the council's amendment, amendable with the your speed signs there. And then we'll put these couple of locations in, the rapid flashing beacons, beacons on 6,000 West, the your speed signs on Canal. And then we'll work on this overall program for where these types of signs would be and on the other, you know, we expanded that a little bit to other devices.
I think that sounds, I think that sounds great. Do we need an motion to do this or just we need to...
We don't have an action out of the night. This is just a discussion, so I don't think you can't take a vote.
I think it's a, a good idea. When you, we come back though, I would love if, um, before our work session, we could get, um, some information and then we can have reviewed it beforehand. And I'm happy to help with research if you would like to give me a specific topic.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I, I think that it's important that when we come back and we have the greater discussion that, you know, we've done our homework well, we're well informed and that we have a, uh, you know, a well-presented discussion with all positions on the issues, uh, you know, from all the various departments. And, and as, as Mayor's noted, those who maybe like a given device, those who don't. And, you know, uh, the pros and cons of, of the whole program, program and devices we're talking about.
So can I ask a question? So this portion of Canal Boulevard between the Alpine Highway and 6,000 West, the speed limit was at 35 and we reduced it to 30 to be compatible with all of Canal Boulevard. You know, and there's been some efforts certainly by law enforcement and things to try to keep the speed down on the new part of Canal Boulevard between North County and Alpine. And I take great delight in driving the speed limit and having people back up behind me because everyone wants to drive that faster. But I think as that area develops up in there, we're going to have a lot of cross traffic coming in on that road. And so I think we need to have some sort of sign there frequently, and I've seen it there quite a bit. But I was kind of actually happy to see the law enforcement picking people up because people drive that too fast. I mean, most people want to drive at 35 to 40 miles an hour. But, you know, it's a problem because then you cross Alpine Highway and you want to drive that same speed going down there and that just doesn't work at all. So I think a nice, permanent monitor there, if possible, would be a good thing.
Okay, so can, can I ask one more question?
So we've heard a lot of concerns around Yorkshire Drive and Yorkshire Court. Is it possible for you to bring us back some information about how many cars are speeding in that area? So that when we do have a policy and we're ready to do that, that we can act quickly on behalf of the residents that have expressed concerns tonight?
Yes, yes, we'll be happy to put out our counters on, on the Yorkshire area and, and count the data, um, uh, you know, as it exists today and, and, you know, gather what we can gather.
So that, what we'll be able to do is put it out, we'll know what the speed they were going in that area and the car count, correct?
Yeah, that's what our counters tell us, is how many cars and, you know, what speeds they're going.
And, and the time of day when that happened?
Yes, yes, it does also report time of day. Thank you.
Any other input? So that, what, what the staff is proposing is we're also going to be moving forth this speed sign there on Canal Boulevard, so. If there's no other questions, thank you, Andy. We will now go, uh, back to, uh, item number three, which is a public hearing on the text amendment of freestanding signs. This is different than speed signs, this is now a advertising sign for a business.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Okay, just like the mayor said, this is for commercial signage, uh, freestanding signs. Currently in the city of Highland, we have one and it is on Timp Highway. There's that picture right there. It's for the Highland Town Plaza area, just by that, just by the Fizz Building. That existing sign, uh, meets our code requirements, which are currently has an eight, 18-foot tall max. That's 15 feet of signage and then a three-foot tall rock base. Just a little bit of background as to why this is being brought up. The applicant, Joe Hamm, is, well, he's working as the developer and applicant of the Highland Marketplace Site Plan, which y'all are plenty familiar with. You've seen it a few times over this last year. Um, the city council approved an overall site plan update on December 7th, 2021. That brought it to that, those eight buildings because they failed to find a grocer for that area. In the project narrative, which is one of the exhibits in the staff report, the applicant explained that because of the size and depth of the project, that tenants are needing identification along street fronts as their signage may not be visible from the street. Um, this was brought to the Planning Commission on January 25th, just last week, and they did hold a public hearing. There was one resident that did, um, comment talking about the community, bleh, the community design element in the general plan, um, and as, as well as the residential nature of Highland City. The, just overall, um, the applicant was given the opportunity to decide whether they wanted to continue the item to the next Planning Commission meeting and come back with, um, a response or a revision to their proposal as a result of the Planning Commission's concerns or for the Planning Commission to recommend denial and explain their concerns. And the applicant chose to forward it on to the city council with, um, recording the Planning Commission's concerns. And so that's what I'll go through. Um, overall, they recommended denial due to concerns with proposed height and depth. And then the Planning Commission also made clear that they were in favor of the proposed lighting and letter style and the landscape changes. I'll go into further detail as I go through the summary of their request. Oops. Why isn't it going back? Okay, this is just the vicinity map. It's the CR zone. Uh, just to clarify, as the, um, ordinance exists, the commercial freestanding sign ordinance is applicable to the CR zone, which is this, and then the C1 zone, um, which is the, like, town, that Highland Town Plaza area, um, as well as the Macy's area. And then a Highland Town Center commercial. No, it's not going, okay. So in the commercial center freestanding zone ordinance, um, or just freestanding ordinance, there, it's split into sections where it goes into details on location requirements, height requirements, materials, landscaping, et cetera. And so we're just going to go through each of those. On location, it was noted there is a bit of a discrepancy in our code as it stands. Uh, the proposal, if you can see, it's kind of tough to see, but the blue line is, it, the blue lines are it as it exists. And then the red is the amended proposal. And then right there where there's a yellow and a purple line, the yellow is, um, the proposal. And then the purple is as it exists. So just to clarify, if you saw in one of the exhibits in the staff report, it does show the intended locations of these two freestanding signs. One of them is intended to be in front of that Treehouse Dental Building was, which is the one just south of Blue Lemon. The purpose of that is that that Blue Lemon pad is actually owned by a different property owner. And so they're unable to put a freestanding sign in front of that. And because of that, that's why they're proposing to decrease the... why they're proposing to decrease the distance from the intersection from 400 to 300 to allow them to put that sign in front of the property that they own. And that's along Timp Highway. And then the other reason for the decrease from 150 feet to 80 feet from a residential zone, this is actually something that the applicant pointed out to me and I believe the people that wrote the code thought the same way that I did. I only took under consideration the residential zones directly adjacent to this site plan and did not look at the residential zone across the street, across from Timp Highway. When you measure it out, that's the yellow and purple line. The purple line is measured 150 feet from that residential zone across Timp Highway. And so it's basically saying that in order to have a freestanding sign along Timp Highway, it's got to be 20 or 30 feet into your parking lot instead of in the parkway detail. And so that's where there is a discrepancy where the yellow is what they're proposing, is to allow them to put that freestanding sign in the parkway detail.
So Kelly, are you talking about the Alpine Highway and not Timp Highway?
Yes, I am. You are correct. It's Alpine Highway. Thank you. So that's that.
So this is, so they're proposing to put a sign in the yellow area or only in the blue areas?
Well.
At the end of the red one?
The yellow area is just showing, so, blue is as it exists, like the code as it exists, is that far away from intersection slash residential zone. And then red is the proposed. So 300 feet from the intersection is proposed and then 80 feet from a residential zone is proposed. And just to clarify how the Planning Commission felt about that, there were three that were okay with the location changes. There was one commissioner that expressed concern with how close a sign would be to that residential zone across Alpine Highway. And then there was one commissioner that was in favor of just keeping the existing location requirements.
So, in some ways, O'Kelly, and just as I've thought about this, moving it from the 400 to the 300 feet away from the intersection actually is better for the residents across the street, I would think, because that sign will be just across from the north side of Harts. Isn't that right?
It is. It's, it's still across the street from that residential property. If you look at directly north of Harts, it is the back of their property, but yes, that could be the case.
But it's, it's not up behind all the others, yeah.
By their house, yeah. And then for size, this is one of the, this was one of the biggest discussions over at Planning Commission. It was originally proposed that, like I said, the max height as it stands is 18 feet. The original proposal was to increase that maximum height to 40 feet. While, while the planning commissioners, two of them were in favor of having it be 20 feet flat and then two were in favor of 25. And there was also concerns about the five foot, five feet in depth. That was one of their proposed increases was from three feet in depth to five and it was because they were proposing a 40-foot tall sign. And so they would need that much depth, depth for it to be able to stand. But after the Planning Commission expressing their concerns, the applicant has since revised their proposal. And so that's what you see there is the height going from 18 to 25 feet and then the width, the width staying at 16 and then the depth going from three to four rather than the five. This is just to give you an example of what 25 feet would look like. This is the building in Lone Peak Village office and this is 34 feet tall. Here you have a 28-foot tall sign that says that Smith's Marketplace just on Timp Highway in Lehigh, technically. And then this is, if you're familiar with this sign in Lehigh, this is about 40 feet tall. So this is kind of like showing their original proposal. This is, I looked into what neighboring cities have in their code for maxes for freestanding signs. American Forks is 35, Cedar Hills is 30, Pleasant Grove is 35, Orem came out to an average of 26. They base it off of how far away from the right of way it is. And then Provo was 35. Going into materials, it was proposed to, well, keep the existing materials but then add painted aluminum as a permitted material. And then they also proposed to add clarifying that lettering and logos may also be created using solid aluminum faces with routed out graphics displaying backlit, push-through or backup acrylic with first surface vinyl. We as staff recommended to add the following, the identification of the development name or the company names on the sign shall be in the form of individual pan channel lettering, aluminum routed letter, lettering with acrylic background or other high-quality sign design characteristics. And then saying that those removable panels would be prohibited. Those are like the ones on the Smith sign where you have the backgrounds that are all different colors. They're removable. You just slide them in. And prohibiting those is intended to make it so we have a more consistent look, making it look nice. You have the same color background along it. And the Planning Commission did express their support for those changes. For lighting, this is a simulated night render, rendering that they provided us of what the lighting would look like at nighttime. So as you can see, it doesn't have the whole back lit up. It's just the words and the logos where the light comes through. And, well, that's where it is, is that internal illumination through the acrylic or polycarbonate faces. And the Planning Commission was also in favor of that change to allow that type of lighting. And then the landscaping, currently we have, it's a two-square-foot buffer essentially around the base that's required for landscaping. And as that landscape, like with that landscaping, we have basically percentages of, you have to have a certain percentage of perennial, a certain percentage of evergreen-type landscaping and a certain percentage of annual vegetation. And so the proposed amendment is to take those required percentages out, basically just like taking out the minimum requirements for plant types and allowing them to be a little more flexible when it comes to their landscaping around the base. And the Planning Commission also expressed their favor for this change as well. This is kind of going into an analysis as to what we have in the general plan that's applicable to this proposal. In the economic development section, there are, well, two of the goals are to adopt business-friendly processes and rules and then maintain fiscal health and stability by maintaining a healthy balance of sales and property tax revenue. And then in the community design element, this is one of the things that the resident brought up in the public hearing at Planning Commission. There are seven design ideas in that element and one of them is that second bullet point to maintain and enhance the scenic backdrop to the north and east were feasible. And then the intent of that is to preserve and enhance the unique visual qualities that make Highland City a special place. We think the decrease from 40 feet in height to a proposal of 25 definitely accomplishes that, at least going from 40 feet. And then in the development code in the CR zone, the stated goals are to create an attraction to non-residents, allow individual businesses to clearly identify itself in a proper manner and safeguard and enhance property values. For citizen participation, we did all the appropriate noticing for this meeting as a public hearing and we also had that one resident that participated during the public hearing. And we as staff just recommend that the city council hold that public hearing and discuss the maximum height as the Planning Commission did and also the location discrepancies and determine whether or not the amendment is appropriate for Highland. And then these are just the proposed motions, whether you choose to approve or deny. And the applicant is also present, Joe Hamm, if you have any questions for him.
Thank you, Kelly. We'll invite the applicant to come up if that's okay. There, Joe, if you'll introduce yourself.
Thank you, Joe Hamm, excuse me, MNG Development, representing, or representing the ownership here. Could I ask if we could go to the site plan again? And forgive me for repeating much of what my request was to the Planning Commission, but this site, certainly at our request, has been designed in a way that's different than most other shopping centers. We would love to have been able to attract some box user that would drive traffic to the back of the shopping center. But failing that, we have created somewhat of a plaza inside this already existing development. Now, as you know, we purchased the, most of the buildings that line Tepanogus Highway and Alpine Highway and went to work to try and come up with a concept. And, and again, as I said, failing the attraction of a large anchor tenant that would drive traffic to the back, we designed this plaza concept that each and every one of the tenants that we have been speaking to have requested some exposure of their name and brand along Tepanogus and Alpine Highway. And so it became incumbent upon us to come in and ask for an increase in the size or the height of the sign in order to accommodate all of these signs. Initially, it was our concept, given the speed of the traffic along Tepanogus Highway, that we needed 40 feet in height. We thought that would also allow us to compete well with, and I know we're not a freeway site by any means, but it would allow us to compete with what we are attracting here, which is mostly food users now, with all of the food users down at the freeway. We heard the Planning Commission loud and clear and decided, you know what, our tenants are going to have to decide on the size of the sign that we can provide. And we hope that the council and the Planning Commission could support a 25-foot height that would allow us to, if we double up the signs, would allow us to get close to the 40 tenants that we, or excuse me, 22 tenants that we will have back in the back of the property. The request for a change in landscape and the depth, those were not things that give us any kind of an advantage. Those were only things that we needed to do to accommodate the size of the sign there and the pole that supports the sign and the size of the base that we need around the sign. So, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of the applicant?
Um, oh, so go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So I don't have a lot of questions. I guess I would just kind of put my opinion out there right at the first. So I listened to the Planning Commission meeting and I thought that they were really thorough and came up with some really great changes for the sign. And so I agree with most of what they, what they said. I don't think we need to micromanage what kind of plants you put. I like the ideas that they had about making the sign look more, more uniform. And I feel like you have done a really great job in trying to attract quality tenants. And I don't feel like you came in with that 40 feet as a negotiation. I think you're genuinely trying to fill your property. I also appreciated what Doug said before about the aesthetics and trying to make it so that Highland still feels like Highland. And I think the accommodations you've already made are really helpful with that. So, between that and the fact that this is the only zone this would apply to and the fact that when I talked to Chief William earlier, he didn't have safety concerns about it, makes me feel fine with your proposal.
Can I just, Kelly, this is only going to apply to the CR zone or is this applying to all business zones in Highland?
It's CR, C1, and the commercial in Highland Town Center. Obviously, C1 already has their commercial freestanding sign and they're only allowed one on Alpine Highway and one on Timp Highway, but they have no frontage on Timp Highway. So.
But the council could decide either to apply it to all, all commercial zones or they could make a motion just only for the CR zone, which is where this is at. So that is one of the considerations that could be made tonight. So.
I just want to say that, I guess as a member of the city council, I really want to make sure that your businesses are successful, that our residents know that they're there, that they shop in Highland, they eat in Highland, and they know what is there. So, I'm fine with the 25-foot. I know that the Planning Commission did a lot of work to resource this out, research this out and I appreciate that they basically did all the work for us. So, that's kind of my opinion there.
So, I'd like to concur. I, I favor the 25-foot height too, but I, I just want to say the following. You know, in the many surveys, and I've been on the council before and that, what I hear the citizens of Highland say is basically, they want to keep most of the city kind of residential and things, but our commercial development they want in the town center. And, you know, right now, a large portion of the funds that we give for our general fund are from sales tax, but only a quarter of that sales tax comes from direct sales. So, I really appreciate you coming in and all the work you've done because this piece of property has been vacant for 15 years and I'm glad to see it develop and I think it's going to provide some very needed services. I mean, my family, we will use it. And I think it's going to provide some very needed revenue, especially as some of our other sources of revenue tend to get really pinched or dry up. So, I appreciate your effort. I appreciate you're willing to compromise on the height of the sign. I think 40-foot sign's a little high for Highland. I think it probably fit in Las Vegas pretty well, but it's a little, it'll fit in Lehigh because they like tall things over there. But thanks for compromising and I support the 25-foot height as well.
Okay, we do need to have a public hearing. Joe, this is a, a side note, something that was interesting. Both myself and Nathan Crane got invited to meet with the Draper mayor. And the Draper mayor says, we would, you know, we'll meet you at a restaurant in Highland. Well, so I went through, I said, okay, we either could eat at a buffet, we could go and eat at a Chinese place, we can go eat, and they're all great. And I'm thinking, are we going to eat at Thai? You know, we start going through, we could go to Myers Meats and go in that little, you know, the little seat section they have there. I mean, I'm going through going, we need some food locations here in Highland. We're, we're going to actually eat at Blue Lemon with, with the mayor there, Draper in their city, a manager. But we look forward to that. I, I'm going to echo what the council has said and we still need to have a public hearing, but as a business owner and someone that owns some real estate, it is, the signage is, especially yours is, is a little bit hidden. We do need to help you as a business owner. You know, you're one of the things, you came in, I think some of the council members met at the time with one of the users that you have coming in here and we says, what can we do to help you? Well, counsel, this is one of those issues to be able to help and be able to be successful in Highland. So, but at this time, we do need to open up for public comments. We can see if there's some public issues. And so if that's okay, Joe, I'll invite you to sit down. At this time, we'd like to open the item of the text amendment for the freestanding sign is not open for a public hearing. Is there anyone that'd like to come up? Doug?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Doug Courtney and I'm speaking to you this evening as a citizen of Highland. When this came before the Planning Commission, I spoke against it, mostly because of the request for a 40-foot sign in the middle of Highland. I really appreciate that Joe Hamm and his team, I have worked with the city on this and really did a good job of explaining some of the other areas that were concerns to me originally. I'm no longer opposed to the request. I, I think that it's something that we should be approving. I do however have five technical concerns about the proposal. The first one is that Section 3710, Paragraph 3 states that "commercial center freestanding signs shall be similar in design, material, and color throughout Highland." This seems to preclude approval of the intended signs. They clearly are not similar in design, material, or color to Highland's existing commercial center freestanding sign. So this text should probably be amended as part of the proposal. Two, and I actually just noticed this during the meeting here, that the proposed sign appears to have a size in excess of 300 square feet per side. And Section 3-707, the proposed amendment would limit the size to 275 square feet per side. And so that number also probably needs to change or else that too would preclude approving the sign as proposed. Sections 3-707 and Section 3-710 describe the height requirements differently in a way that I think is confusing. Maximum height means something different in each section. Section 3-707 defines maximum height of 25 feet with a minimum three-foot base, whereas Section 3-710 defines a maximum height of 22 feet with a maximum three-foot base for a total of 25 feet. A better description in both cases might be a maximum height of 25 feet, including a rock base with a minimum height of three feet. Fourth, the term "light pollution" found in Section 3-710, Paragraph 4, does not appear to be defined in the development code. At any rate, I, I did a search and didn't come up with anything. In the case of a sign with an external lighting, this is reasonably construed as the light doesn't shine on anything other than the sign. But when we're talking about a sign that is internally illuminated and shining light out of the sign, I, I think what light pollution means really needs some out of the sign, I think what light pollution means really needs some consideration, especially since we're putting it facing a residential zone just eighty feet away. Fourth, sorry, fifth, and last, for the C1 and Town Center zones, the proposed 3-707 and 3-710 conflict about sign requirements for commercial center freestanding signs. 3-707 lists maximum heights of fifteen feet, for example, while 3-710 will list a maximum height of twenty-five feet. Either the proposal ends up repealing the conflicting portions of 3-707 with the repeal clause, or we're left with a sort of a confusing mishmash of people not really understanding where to look to get the requirements for signs in the C1 and Town Center zones. So, I encourage the council to approve this proposal. I think it is a good one. I do hope that you'll take some of those concerns into consideration prior to doing so, however. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Doug. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and make a comment? If not, at this time, we're closing the public hearing, moving it back to the city council. Are there any discussion items or are they prepared for a motion?
I just want to hear Rob's thoughts on Doug's comments there.
It sounded like there were, I am not surprised either there might be some inconsistencies in different parts of our code that need to be rectified. Handling them all tonight, unless we want to spend a long time crafting a motion, may be a little bit difficult, but I think we have the list. I think Doug sent that to Kelly and we've all saw the record and we will work on getting that maybe presented to the planning commission and then back to council so we can maybe fix that as we go forward rather than holding up this motion tonight.
Perfect.
With as council, you know, a couple items, maybe we have to probably decide in your motion, is it going to be applying to all commercial zones or just this one, you know, if it's just the CR zone? And then it also is asking about the location. Is there any discussion upon where the proposed location of the sign's going to be?
I'm supportive of where the sign location has been presented and proposed. And I think I'm in favor as well for all commercial. I think one of the things, when I had first moved to Highland, even the businesses that are here are pretty hard to identify. It took me a long time. I had to look them up on Google. I could not identify many of them by driving around the city. And so I think it is part of our responsibility to make sure that the businesses that we have are successful and that we do our part. Of course, also keeping in mind protecting residents and residential zones as well. But I think what's been proposed tonight is reasonable and makes a lot of sense on both protecting our residents and meeting their needs as well as meeting the needs of the commercial areas.
That wouldn't extend to the Boyer development, correct? Sarah?
I...
What you're suggesting?
They have that eight-acre commercial, would that extend over there? And the Boyer project, they have some commercial over there. What zone is that? Is that...
It's a PD and so it's entirely different.
So, it's not going, so the signage would not affect, this proposal would not, is not going to affect that PD zones, right? Is that the understanding?
That's true. Okay. Another thing to note is that in the code where it specifies that it's the C1, CR, and Highland Town Center commercial zones where this is permitted, it also puts a minimum square footage that a shopping center has to have in order to qualify to have a freestanding sign, and that is four acres. So, and, yeah.
So, going over to Boyer, could they have, it'd be in their, from Canal Boulevard, they'd have that northeast area, would that, would that meet four acres there?
That could be eight acres, yeah. There's actually fifteen acres they haven't purchased yet from the development center.
On the south end.
Yeah.
Is there concern if it does apply to Boyer?
I just think it's good to be proactive and know what it's going to affect.
So, the PD zone references back to our zoning ordinance? So, if it met the standards, then yes, it would, you could potentially have this. Council of discussion, motion?
If I may make one more comment regarding the changes that, to be proposed, it would be good to clarify that the maximum square footage should be increased. The other things are more, they're not going to limit this construction of the sign. The square footage will limit the construction of the sign. So, if the council's on board with the other changes as proposed, I might also recommend that the council, as part of the motion, amend the table regarding the CR zone for commercial freestanding signs such that the maximum square footage reflects the height and the calculations that you're otherwise approving as part of your motion. We'll figure out the number.
So, say that one more time, please.
So, as part of your motion, you also authorize or adopt an amendment to Table 3-707A...
Okay, I see it there.
...regarding the CR zone for commercial freestanding signs to increase the maximum square footage allowed for such signs commensurate with the dimensions you're approving. And that will get you there.
Scott, did you get that? I'm giving that motion to you. You're the most senior one here.
I think I've...
You got it, Brittany?
I think I got it.
Brittany's got it.
Okay.
Brittany. Not even Kim!
I have Brittany and Kim.
Yes.
Now I forgot what I'm doing.
Sorry.
I would like to, let's see, I am making a motion to approve this proposal with an amendment to Table 3-707A for the CR commercial freestanding signs to increase the dimensions to something that is in line with our discussion.
So, do we need to delineate the maximum sign height, the base, and the depth? Isn't that to be delineated?
That's, is that in the proposal, so we're good?
That is in the proposal.
I did update it in that amendment, in the proposed amendment.
Does the proposal need to have in the 3-707 and the 3-710 as part of the proposal? For the motion? Just wondering if that need to be part of the motion?
Oh, yes, both of them need to be part of it.
And 3-710. 3-, we're amending 3-707 and 3-710 of the Development Code.
Okay, Stephanie, do you understand the motion?
I would love to have a repeat of that motion, please.
So, we are making a motion...
Make a motion.
...to approve this proposal and amend Sections 3-707 and 3-710 of the Development Code, the tables in those, in that code, to be in line with our discussion here.
I think you're amending sign square footage.
Oh, our discussion, yeah, our discussion about the maximum sign square footage in those tables.
And I believe you're amending Table number 3-707A.
Yeah, 3-707A and 3-710. Amend those tables for the maximum size of the sign.
I'll second it.
Do we need to have very specific on what the height is or is that...
In the table, it's twenty-five.
Okay.
And it's four-foot depth and it's a three-foot base, right? And that's what's in the table.
Correct. So, the maximum square footage will be based on those proposals that you have just approved.
Right.
Okay. I have, it was motion by Brittany. Scott, you were the second.
Yes.
I have a second by Scott. Are we ready for a vote or any other discussion? If not, let's move to vote. That passes five to zero. Thank you. We'll now move to item number four, an architectural review of the Highland Marketplace Phase Two. Kelly, I believe that is you.
Yes, Joe thought he was done. He's not. Okay, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. This is the vicinity map. This is the same property we were just discussing, but it's all the vacant, vacant land. Just to give you a bit of background, for all of Highland Marketplace back in 2007, the city entered into a development agreement with the original developer. And this development agreement established an overall master site plan as well as architectural themes, landscaping, lighting, signage, et cetera. And in the development agreement with the architectural themes, it does state that the council has approved them. Typically with the CR zone, they do go to Planning Commission City Council as it states in the code, but because the development agreement states that they approve them, they would be approved by staff, just making sure that they follow the architectural themes. If you remember, back in January and February of 2021, one of the architectural elevations did come to the Planning Commission City Council. The reason why it came is, well, the reason it came is because staff determined that those architectural elevations did not match those approved in the development agreement. And so it did come to the city council for approval as it was a different theme. With these new updated architectural elevations, we have determined that they do go back to that original theme. And I'll show you, this, these are the images that are in the development agreement. You can see just the stonework and the beiges, grays, the window displays. It's all pretty basic, looks like what we have in most of Highland when it comes to our commercial. Oops. How did it skip three? Okay. I apologize. Give me a second. One more, come on. Okay. Summary of the request, we're looking at three retail buildings right now. If you remember, with the updated site plan that the council approved back in December, it went from five buildings to eight. The square footage basically remained the same. It was within like two hundred square feet. And the reason being was because they were unable to find a grocer for the site and so they were just rearranging the square footage. The proposed materials are just painted stucco, cultured stone, and then cement with a painted wood texture. And then the colors are grays, browns, and beiges. It's kind of hard to see on the screen, but I'm sure you can see it a little better on your little TV. But this is how the materials are reflected on the building. This is a site plan, again, a little difficult to see on the screen, dang it, but this just shows the three buildings that we're looking at. Building A on the west side, and then you have B and C that face towards a plaza area. This is building A, and so that top elevation is what you see that will face east, which is that parking lot area. You can see those display windows going along the front and then a little bit on the south side. And then that back is what's going to be facing that wall that is along the residential zone on the west side of the site. This is building B. This is that north, it's the north, northern building on that little plaza area. And that middle picture that you see, the applicant has expressed that tenants that he's been speaking with are wanting to put signage on both sides of the building. And so from the parking lot, you'd be able to see what stores or companies are there. And then another little thing that the applicant mentioned with this building, that on the right side of the top elevation, if you see that, those windows look a little different from the others. He said that the tenant that's wanting to go in there, that's intended to be kind of like the garage opening where it comes up and you'd have more open seating area where it'd just be open to outside. This is building C, and so those windows are facing north to that plaza area. And then the middle elevation is facing south, facing those existing commercial buildings that we have. Same thing with the signage, you would have it on both sides. Oh, and another thing to note is that if you can tell how the heights are all varied as you go along, the reason being, here, I'm actually going to go to this. So, this was reviewed by the planning commission last week on the 25th. We did recommend a stipulation that the roofline be adjusted to meet the requirements in the Development Code. And the Development Code in the Architectural Design section for the CR zone, it does specify that there cannot be any longer than fifty feet measured horizontally where the height of the roofline is the same. And if there, what the change is in the height of the roofline, they have to be at least eighteen inches for it to be considered a different roofline. And so, since the planning commission, they have updated those elevations and those are the three that you saw that have the updated rooflines. And so, we have taken that stipulation off of our recommendation to the council. And so we, as staff, just recommend the city council, my goodness, approve the proposed architectural plans. We also added a second stipulation. That's just verifying that the architectural elevations will match the new ones that we received just on the 27th.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to come address the city council or...
I have, excuse me, Joe Hamm, MNG Development. Happy to answer any questions. The change is simply to comply with staff's catch in the ordinance that we had not complied with, which was the change in elevations over a fifty-foot run. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer that.
So, one question I do have, and in these three buildings, some of these buildings are going to have multiple businesses and some may have a contiguous one business or two businesses or, you don't know yet.
No, so far, every one of them will have multiple businesses. Some will be larger size. The restaurant, the full-service restaurant that we're talking to will cover thirty-seven-hundred square feet of a six-thousand-square-foot footprint.
Okay.
As an example.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, does council have any discussion items or are they ready for a motion?
I'm ready to make a motion when it's time.
Yeah, I am too.
Okay.
So, I move that the Highland City Council accept the findings and approve the architectural plans for Buildings A, B, and C in the Highland Marketplace, subject to the two stipulations recommended by the planning commission and the staff, which concern requiring a separate permit and meet requirements of the Development Code for signage on these businesses and the architectural elevations, which we've already discussed, which I think has already been resolved, so.
I'll second it.
Moved by Scott, seconded by Tim. Ready for a vote? That passes five to zero. We will now move on to the next item, item number five, Ordinance and Policy Amendment to HMC 2.28, Government Records Access and Management Adoption of Retention Schedule. I believe that is our attorney, Rob Patterson.
It is. Thank you, Mayor and council. If you will, I'll remember a couple of, a couple of council meetings ago when I gave the open public meetings training and grandma training, I referenced that we had been working on an update to the city's records and kind of city grandma code regarding government records as we were going through that and realized it was quite out of date. So, this is an ongoing process, not one that's necessarily time-sensitive. So, as a review, there's a lot of text here and feel free to interrupt if you have any questions. Grandma, the Government Records Access and Management Act, that's the Utah state law that provides standards for access to classification of retention of governmental records. And one section of Grandma specifically says that cities can adopt their own ordinances and policies. If you do not adopt one, you're subject to the state law. However, as you will see as we go through this, a lot of the things that we do are already regulated by the state. So, essentially, a lot of the update that we're doing here is taking out a lot of language that's no longer necessary and just pointing to the state law. So, as I was going through, I'll kind of reference the state provision, old Highland Code, and what we proposed with the new amendment. So, the Highland City Records Code is found in Title II, 28 of the Highland City's Municipal Code. It was originally adopted back in 1992, and as far as I can tell, it's never been updated since then. It had a retention schedule back then that just said we pointed to the state archives, which pointed to a record series schedules that have now since been replaced and are obsolete. So, we're trying to get this a little more updated here. So, first... So first, the state code says that cities subject to state law regarding governmental records, um, except for certain limited areas where they essentially carve out room for the city to make its own decisions. So in response to this, proposed change to the city code is that we've removed a vast majority of the city's specific definitions and classification standards for records, as those are all governed directly by state law. And we don't want to have a confusion between whether the city will comply with state law or not, we are required to comply with state law. So this was old section zero-three-zero, you know, the definitions we left in our act regarding Grandma and a records officer, which is our city recorder, Stephanie. Uh, she is the one responsible for handling all grammar requests initially and being the caretaker of our records. Under state law, um, we are subject to state law classification standards. That means by default, all government records are public, except for those that are allowed to be classified as non-public. State law defines what can be considered non-public, not us. So uh, the proposal is to streamline our code, remove our own sections that talked about whether record was classified as protected, confidential, or privileged, and simply point to state law again as to those matters. The next few slides all deal with fees. State code also regulates how the city can apply fees. Um, and in fact, state law specifically says that city must provide guidelines for establishing of fees in accordance with state law. We can charge, we can only charge for the actual cost of providing records. We can charge the actual cost if a request comes in to manipulate a record in a form that we don't usually keep it in, we could charge them the cost of doing that. Um, in determining what the cost is to the city, we look at the lowest salary of the employee who is skilled and trained and able to respond to the request. And then they get fifteen minutes of free time in responding to the request. Uh, there is no charge for time that the city spends inspecting or reviewing a record to determine whether it's subject to disclosure or not. So if it ever came up and, you know, I get involved to say, oh, is this, should this be public or not, we don't charge that on to any uh, requestor. Uh, so the old uh, city code just repeated state law regarding fees. Um, state law also says that we should provide waivers in certain circumstances, especially when it's in the public interest. But neither state law fully addresses that, and our code, old code, didn't really address what it meant to be in the public interest. So we're going to fix a couple of those things, at least we propose to. Um, so the proposed changes is to, um, we'll repeat state law regarding how fees are calculated. We'll add a provision along the city if multiple requests come in that seem designed to avoid fees by, you know, taking advantage of that fifteen minutes free time, that they can be accumulated as one. And if a request is significant or there are unpaid fees outstanding, city can request fees upfront. This is kind of how the city has been handling it, but it's never been codified or put into an official policy, so. Um, and then uh, state law says we are encouraged to waive fees in certain situations uh, when the record primarily benefits the public rather than a person. The requestor is the subject of the record, um, or the requestor's legal rights are implicated by the record and the requestor is pecuniary. State law says that someone who requests a record in order to publish it for broadcast in the news is presumed to be acting in the interest of the public. We're basically going to take that and put that into our code to define, this is what it means to be in the public interest. Um, so we'll uh, repeat state law on that. Oh, sorry, that's the one I wanted. Uh, and add more clarification on when we consider things to be in the public interest. These are kind of examples, not limited to it, but issues that impact all city residents, so utilities or taxes, where it's clear it's of more public interest. Issues that have been in the news in the past six months, issues that have been on any public body of the city in the last six months on an agenda. Um, and again, if someone is affiliated with news and media organization, those are all times we would presume that they're working for the benefit of the public rather than a private and go to waive the fees.
Can I ask you one question about that one?
Absolutely.
Um, so I'm just super curious with First Amendment rights, what counts as news? Like, is, is Facebook news? If I say it's news and I put it on Facebook, does that make it um, grandma-able?
So that's, it's actually a question that I had when I was reading the state law. It just says, you know, a, someone who requests it for broadcast or publishing, which theoretically, publishing it on Facebook would count. Um, uh, it seems to me the intent of it was for, you know, traditional news organizations, newspapers and things. But on the other hand, we live in a kind of more modern internet-connected world. It seems weird that someone could request it and put it onto a Facebook group. And so perhaps that is a, a change that you'd prefer to see in terms of how to guide staff in responding to fee waivers. I had kind of proposed living with the traditional media, but we're open to council's thoughts on this. Um, it can go either way.
Like legally though, you would be allowed to limit that? I didn't think you could on social media.
So we would never limit it on social media. If someone has a public record, they can share it, however.
No, but like limit the, um, not asking for a fee?
Yes, and that's, whether to charge a fee or not is kind of up to the city's discretion. State law doesn't really say either way. It, it encourages the city to waive fees, especially since these are public records, they're from the government. So I would, I kind of looked at it as it was traditionally, but I think it would make a lot of sense and perhaps be good policy to interpret it more broadly for anyone seeking to publish it in any sort of medium.
So I think this is probably appropriate time to ask the question of, in ninety-two, it appears that when someone says, hey, I'm going to get charged a fee, and they wanted to question, you know, you know, should they be exempt, it went to city council. In this new proposal, it doesn't come to the city council, it goes to city administrator. Is that, am I understanding that correct?
Correct, and, well, clarification, so the records officer, the city recorder is the one who handles all grammar requests. So requests for fee waivers and requests for records all go to the uh, records officer first. So Stephanie would first make a decision whether to grant a fee waiver or not. Um, previously, in the old code, it was, you could appeal that if, you know, for some reason Stephanie decided to deny that request either for a record, and this was, we're about to get to that on the slide, but.
Sorry.
Um, any denial of a fee, fee, fee waiver request or a records request, uh, they have the right to appeal. Uh, back in nineteen ninety-two, and when this code was adopted, that was set up to go to, because a little bit unclear, it says mayor and city council in some places, and then just mayor and others. Uh, current state law says the city must designate the chief administrative officer of the city to be the appeals officer for grandma and records requests. Um, as I've seen that interpreted, that's usually the city manager. Um, where there's no city manager, that does become the mayor. Uh, I put in the city administrator, as that's kind of how I've seen it done in other cities. However, you could have it go to the mayor. Um, the interesting thing about state law is it's specific to, you must appoint a person, not a body. It has an actual separate appeal section for a, a review board. So it could theoretically, you could have it from Stephanie to administrative, chief administrative officer to an appeals board, but then state law says the appeals board has to be made up by an employee and members of the public. Um, I think Grandma is designed to avoid having the council weigh in on grandma requests. I'm not sure whether that was the legislature's intent or not, but it's how it's written.
So can I segue off that?
Sure.
So it looks to me like we're setting up the same administrator as the appeal authority on grandma requests, is what I'm hearing you say.
Correct.
I think that's fine by and large, but we have a small city staff. So what do you do in cases where the grandma request actually has to, directly involves the city administrator and wants a lot of things that he's been involved in? It seems like it's a little bit of a conflict of interest that the appeal would go to him, do you see what I mean? I'm a little concerned, and, and I'd just like to get this in here right off. I appreciate you, all the work that's been done on this, and we definitely need to upgrade this code. But my feeling is, is that on these big texts and code things, it'd be nice to have this presented one city council and then have the opportunity to kind of sit down with people and ask questions and things, and then maybe approve it the following city council after some discussion, because this is pretty extensive, and we basically had today and yesterday that we could kind of discuss things, you know, I was, I've been studying it, but I thought, I'd really like more time on this, because this is fairly complex. And there's a lot of definitions in here, especially on how long the records need to be kept, uh, like from a year to seven years and different kinds of things. I'd like to sit down with our city recorder and, and administrator and just ask and get examples of these, because this code's been in place for thirty years. We're going to change it, I think we need more than one week to change it. Does that make sense?
Certainly.
I mean, I appreciate all the work that's been done on this, and we need to do this. I agree with this as a whole, but I'd like to learn more about it before I approve it.
How about we do this, Scott? Let, let's let Rob finish through the presentation. Then as a council, if they feel like they want to continue this item, you can make a motion to, to continue it, or if there's some that are comfortable to, to do the voting. But that way, I think you go through your presentation, I might help us with some questions if it is continued.
Oh yeah, I was just segueing on your question.
No, I agree, and we all, both of us sometimes jump in.
Um, yeah, so I'm actually close to the end of it, but I think those are all great points, and certainly there is no rush on this, it's a thirty-year-old code, uh, we should get it updated, but getting it done right is more important. Um, the last couple of major changes, um, so I can just kind of general clean up through there. And I, and I apologize, I, I usually have a redlined version, it's just so much changed in this as I was rewriting it, that it would have just been a, a sheet of red paper. Um, so state law requires the city to establish an appeals process, and this is the quote that I pulled out, that allows a person who has, who has had a denial of a fee waiver or records request, quote, "to appeal to a person designated as the chief administrative officer." And it specifies it's a single person. So the proposed change, I shifted it from mayor and city council and/or mayor, just city administrator. That's not necessarily how it has to be done, but it has to be to whatever the city would consider chief administrative officer, typically that is the city manager, city administrator, or mayor, as they're the executive uh, functionaries. Uh, otherwise, we point to just state law in terms of the appeals process, which is, um, so a city recorder receives a grammar request that may or may not include a request for a fee waiver, um, identifies the requestor and the record sought. Uh, Stephanie handles these routinely, um, she will review them, gather the records, and submit them. Uh, at the time a request is made, you, you can also classify a record as non-public, either as private, uh, private.
Protected and classified.
Protected and classified, thank you. For some reason I blinked on the three classifications. Um, and if that happens, they are entitled to a written notice of denial that says, uh, you give general information about the record, uh, as I've done it myself, and she's like, oh, there's an email dated to such, um, general topic of, you know, maybe it's attorney-client privileged information, and it's withheld under three oh five seventeen, uh, as it's a confidential record under attorney-client privilege. So you give them kind of general information, there was a record, we've withheld it for a certain reason. They have the right to then appeal that to the city administrator. And to uh, Councilmember Smith's point, I actually have been involved with several grammar requests that have involved records specific to the director or executive leadership of a public body. And to some extent, it, it can be, it certainly has that issue of being a, a potential conflict of interest. Um, the, the advantage of the state code is, it says, well, the city administrator or whoever that appeals body is, uh, denies it, you know, says, oh, I don't care, I'm not going to do it, or, you know, says, you know, our records officer got it completely correct, this is not a public record. They have the chance to appeal again to a non-court entity. This is the State Records Committee, they're an entity similar to the Ombudsman's Office for Property Rights, this is specific for records. Uh, they hold hearings every month, I, I've participated in several of them. Uh, they have a whole committee where they review the records on their own, determine whether they're properly withheld or not, and then issue decisions that get released. If that person is still unsatisfied, or maybe the city's unsatisfied, or whatever that works out, you can then appeal finally to district court. Um, all of that process is free, um, the appeal's going up except for the initial fee. So there is a kind of a mechanism in place if the chief administrative officer is, has that potential conflict, that it goes to a state entity that has no conflict and the appeal is free.
Can I ask a question?
Correct.
So why is the state legislature, and this seems to be based on their code, why have they bypassed the elected officials as part of the appeal process?
I, I, I was very curious as I was reading through why it was specific to avoid that, but it seems designed to do so, and I don't know why.
I would assume it's because a lot of the grammars are elected officials' emails. Does that make sense? It's usually what they're trying to grab in a grammar is communication amongst.
But they could be the administrative staff.
Correct, it could be administrative staff, they're trying to grab the emails or communication from too.
One of the other questions would be, if an appeal to be heard, they're heard either in five or ten days, sometimes twelve in limited circumstances. Depending when that comes in, it'd be hard for the council to meet as a body. It's also hard for the council to meet as a public body to review potentially non-public records during a public meeting. That's not necessarily something you could go into closed session for. It's, it would be tricky to handle, I think, public records as a public body, um, because you'd always have to convene as a quorum to do so, and you have to do so within five to ten days every time a grammar request is made. So there may be some practical, uh, practical concerns as well, but ultimately, I don't know why the legislature drafted the code that way.
I'm just wondering about the appeal process.
Since, since we have a lot here, there probably, here about the trails up in the, well, that's kind of, not the Wimbledon, but up in the Beacon Hills area, let's kind of walk through, maybe we had a request by a group there that wanted to have some information. I think it was determined that they need to pay for that information. And so then they could have peeled that, I'm just going through the process. You know, someone would say that that was going to be a Facebook group of, you know, Save Our Trails or the Alpine Canyon Group that was asking for that information. But as our city recorder, this determined that that needed to be paid. They could have then said, hey, we don't think that should be paid, that's for the public interest. It would go to our city administrator as what's being proposed, correct?
Correct. And he could review that, and state law specifically provides for the balancing of interests, you know. It encourages waiving fees where it's in the public interest. It also encourages, you know, if there's a record that's non-public, to examine that and see whether, you know, maybe it technically isn't a non-public record, but do the interests in having the public have access to that outweigh the need for the city to keep it uh, non-public? So cities, the city administrator, whoever the appeals entity would be, would be encouraged to review that as well. But yes, so in that case, you know, they say you have to pay a, you know, it's going to take us five hours to go through and collect all of these things, that costs, you know, X number of dollars, which is our, you know, hourly wage times five minus fifteen minutes. Um, they say, well, that, we think we're, we should be entitled to a waiver, it gets denied, goes to the administrator, the city administrator can do it or not, can then go to the State Records Committee. Um, it used to be really fast, during COVID, they have gotten slowed down a little bit, unfortunately.
Now, on another thing, if an attorney requests the records, that's not part of grammar, is that correct?
No, an attorney absolutely can request records as part of grammar. In fact, I have had, I have had litigation ongoing where we're subject to both a discovery request in court and a grammar request at the same time. And we still provide the records because they are public. Uh, the final issue, so that was the ordinance change, that's the city's code that we're proposing to uh, update and kind of have it conform to the state law. The other part of that, state law says we have to adopt retention schedules. Uh, retention schedule is basically, uh, the city is supposed to classify all the different kinds of documents and records that it creates into different uh, record series, as they call it. Assign them a category, then say for this specific category, you're supposed to hold on to them for one year, five years, seven years, thirty years, forever, uh, depending on the different classification. Uh, the, the prior records, uh, retention schedules that Highland City had, as far as I can tell, in one ninety-two, that essentially is obsolete. What I have proposed going forward is not a complete retention schedule. Um, uh, as, retention schedules usually are almost handled kind of like by department. Uh, the one before you is for administrations, that would be, uh, you know, internal discussions, discussion between council and um, staff, those kinds of discussions. Usually have retention schedules that cover public works and the building department and clerks and the library. And, and you can imagine, all different kind of groups or departments within the city will have retention schedules specific to them, so they'll. So there'll be a retention schedule specific for building permits, for notices that go out with Platts, for advertisements for fling. All of those things will have separate schedules. We haven't gone through and adopted all that. It is a, it's like a, you know, you could have, it's dozens and dozens and dozens of classifications, so we'll be working through that. We started with the proposal that first, we adopt a general retention schedule where the city simply adopts the state records, the state archives. They have promulgated a kind of default schedule, so we'll adopt theirs until we adopt more specific one. And then as we go through, working with staff, especially with Stephanie, and then, you know, heads of each department, those who are maintaining records, to see, okay, what records are you creating? How important are they? How long do they need to be retained? I proposed the administrative records. There've been some questions regarding transitory communications and working documents, and so that was kind of the first proposal. I drawn this partially from state records or the state archives, as well as from another city's retention schedule. These are in no way set in stone. Absolutely happy to talk through this, kind of some proposal of, this is what we're looking to get to eventually. Here's kind of the first step. There's going to be a lot more steps going through as we work through getting this, all our retention schedules up to date.
So the question I have is, why don't we kind of clarify some of these issues before we actually pass the ordinance?
You absolutely can.
I have a little, I'm a little concerned about all the different timeframes and how many different classifications you have on these records. Because if I was a citizen and wanted to know something and I decided to do it, you know, a year and a day after they decide to destroy all the records, I think I'd be pretty concerned when some of the records can be kept for seven years. I think we need to really kind of clarify and discuss this a little bit. And you know, there's, there's things in here like retain for one year after administrative need ends, or the item documented was completed and then destroy. I mean, who, who determines when it's all done and all that? I'd just like to know, I'd like to sit down with the recorder and administrator and just ask some questions about some of this stuff before I approve it. I think it's great, it's a good, I support it, it's just I'd like to understand it better.
And, and one of the tricky things with this is, these are based on the state archives and they look very similar to this. It's kind of a generic description of types of records, and it'll have a kind of a title that'll say, here's how long you hold it, and then you destroy, or you don't destroy. And there are probably hundreds of potential retention schedules. It's, it is hard to classify it because you have to be able to, the problem is you have to cover every single type of record, which means anything that can be reproduced, any voicemail, email, electronic file, paper document, we have to be able to classify that and say, how long are we going to hold on to this? And that, that's just going to take a lot of time. And I think, I think your point of talking through it, absolutely wise and then.
And can't you simplify it? I mean, some of these records have to be kept forever.
Correct.
But the ones that don't have to be kept forever, it would seem like it'd be easier to come up with a timeframe, two or three timeframes instead of 30, or seven or eight or something, because I think it becomes, the more complex it is, the more confusing, and maybe that's okay, but I don't know. I'd like to clarify.
Maybe that's a, that's a route we can go.
Yeah.
So that's just, that's the proposal. It's, it is a lot of changes, it's trying to update a lot of things all at once. As I said, something we've been working on for a little bit, and there is no particular hurry, it's just one of those things we want to be kind of working on moving forward.
So I agree with Councilman Smith. I would like to continue this item and then come back to it. And in the meantime though, there are three specific sections that I was trying to cross-reference against the state code. And maybe I can send those to you specifically so that you can answer those questions between now and then.
Sure, yes, please.
So if all the rest of the council's ready for a motion, I think we're going to have a motion from either Kim or from Brittany or Scott.
Courtney.
Courtney.
Courtney. I've been called Stephen, so that could be our code names for the grammar record, no. Okay. I just got to find the agenda number here.
Agenda number, we are at item number five.
Okay. I move that we continue agenda item number five for further discussion and to bring it back. And I'm not going to set a timeline on it, I think we need to have some time.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to continue by Scott and seconded by Brittany Courtney. So is there any discussions or are we ready for a vote? Let's go ahead and move to vote to continue the item.
I'm just making sure this is a move to continue, that's what I'm voting on, right?
It is a move to continue.
Okay.
Motion to continue, yeah.
All right. Is it going?
So Tim, if you'd like to go ahead and give us a vocal vote.
Yes.
Oh, yes, then we. Oh, it was moved with a five zero to continue, to continue item number five. We're now on item number six. It's an action item encroachment agreement with the United States Bureau of Reclamation associated with the Murdoch Pressure Irrigation Pump, which is Andy, which I think will go fast.
And we'll move to advances to the next slide. So as many of you will recall, we recently awarded the construction contract for the Murdoch Irrigation Pump Station. This agreement was in the works and we had assurance that it was going to be approved. Felt confident moving forward with the agreement to some, with the construction award, sometimes these agreements just take a little while to catch up. It's basically, and on the screen you'll see our Murdoch pump station's located right just north of Murdoch Trail and right at 4800 West, right there, just where the little circle is on the drawing. Can we go to the next screen, Kelly? So this is basically an agreement with the United States Bureau of Reclamation for us to have a driveway within that little green box and have a pipe that's crossing it, kind of at the left side of the green box. And our activities are limited to those things that have been permitted, but that's all that we needed, that's why we asked for what we asked for. So the driveway's just for when we have to bring something heavy or big into the site. And the pipe is just to get across from where we get our water out of the Proberover Water Users Facility. So pretty straightforward, we don't have a whole lot of ability to amend the agreement. They pretty well set the terms and we just have to agree to it. But it is a necessary agreement for us to be able to operate our pump station. So with that, I'd answer any questions.
It seems like you've got some big names that have to sign this. I was kind of disappointed that President Biden didn't have to sign it too.
It's a pretty official-looking agreement, isn't it?
Yeah, it's official-looking.
Yeah.
United States of America.
Yes, it is very official.
For a road.
Yeah, yeah, just for a little access drive and a pipe to cut across the easement. But it's a, it's a big, it's a big deal when you encroach in these easements.
Well, it's interesting that, you know, here, we are going to be talking in the future about encroachments, and here we're having to sign into the big agreement with the federal government about us having an encroachment, so.
Yeah, yeah, if you're going to, if you're going to adhere to an encroachment sufficiently, it's, it's a formal process.
Irony.
Yeah.
Is there any questions or do you have a bandy on this? If there are any discussion items, if not, we can move right to a motion. I think we're ready for motions.
I'm going to suggest a motion. Kelly, will you go to the next screen? Dave, thank you.
I'll make a motion. I move that the city council approve the easement encroachment agreement with the United States Department of the Interior Bureau of Reclamation and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
I'll second.
It is moved by Sarah, seconded by Kim. We're ready for a vote. So Tim, you're not logged in?
Yes.
Okay, if we could reveal. That's also pacified a zero. We're now on discussion item number seven, options to connect the trail system, which would be up in the Beacon Hills area, and I believe that is Kelly.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So just to go over the purpose of this item, the mayor directed us to look at options that we have as Highland City to connect our trail system to neighboring cities, which are Alpine and Draper that we're looking at. And also to identify the restrictions on our public access with, well, with these options. And I'll go through the different restrictions that we have with each option. And just to state what we've been doing so far is just that staff met with MAG, Alpine City, and Draper City on December 9th to go over, as y'all are aware, that we're, we applied for, well, the MAG funding with the alternative transportation plan that we're going into with Alpine. And that was just to discuss these options. This is part of the MAG, oh, that kind of went down, just a second. Okay, the MAG Trans 40 Plan, and so this just goes through there. Trail Connections Plan, you have Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, and then their Vision Plan. And so Phase 3 are the, is the red trail that you see right there, and then if you see the rest of those yellow dotted lines, this is their vision as to what they're seeing of potential connections. I know that was brought up of the connection to Bonneville Shoreline Trail. If you see that arrow over where it says Cedar Hills, that is where the Bonneville Shoreline Trail connects to, based on their Trans Plan 40. That's over like by AF Canyon, when you follow Tim Highway all the way up to the canyon. And then if you see where I have that circle, kind of trying to, okay. So do you mind, I'm actually gonna, do you mind switching places with me, Erin? This way I can just use the laser on the screen, that way I can show y'all what I'm talking about. Okay. So right here, this trail connection right here, this goes through that Twin Bridges area where you have all the intertwining bike trails. And then over here, as you can see, this is Highland Boulevard that comes up, and so this is a potential trail system coming up. This is the northern portion of Beacon Hills, so about right here is the property to be annexed, and then right here is where we're really looking at. Sorry, it's kind of all clustered together, it's pretty close. And then you have Hogs Hollow Trail right here. As you know, there's this private property portion that's owned by Blue Bison, that's inhibiting our trail connection to, through public property, connecting Highland to Alpine and Alpine to Draper. So that's what we're really looking at right now. So the first option to accomplish this connection was adding a trail through our PI Pond. This is on the very northern end, as you can see here's Draper City lines, and then you have private property on this side and private property to the north, like I have circled here. This is where we have a lack of a public connection, so some sort of, like I have written right here, some sort of potential trail easement or property purchase would need to be accomplished in order for us to get that public connection over to Draper. Another thing, right here along this red line, we have a six-foot-tall, well, chain-link fence, and then you have some barbed wire on top to keep everyone out of, well, the PI Pond. And so another expense that we would, would have in this case if we put the trail through would be putting another six-foot fence on the other side, which would be a chain-link fence. And then there's also, right here in this corner, there are some pictures that I provided in the staff report that show that this is the kind of steep area that our Public Works Pressurized Irrigation Guys said that they've seen a lot of erosion over the years, and so there would have to be some retaining that we'd have to consider right there. And then something else we were also made aware of just yesterday was that we, if we did try to go through with this, that we would need a plan approved by DAM Safety, which is with the state. I know, D-A-M, everyone. But something that, Tavis, who works with our water modeling, let us know is that the fence, this is according to the state, that the fence would need to be between 10 and 25 feet from the toe of the embankment. And to my understanding, I tried to do so much research as to what an embankment actually is, and maybe Andy can help me out. It's like at the toe of the hill, right? Okay, great, Joanna's, Joanna's very right. And so where we may not have enough space is down here, and so that's also something we would have to look into and make sure that we get approval by them. Another option that we looked into is within Beacon Hills Platteye. The biggest constraint with this option, like I have in this neon green, is that would be the potential trail connection to Alpine, which they have this trail connection in their master plan going up to their other city property. But the biggest constraint is the encroachments. I have identified in blue where there are encroachments. There are two properties where this is not an issue. And then I've also provided some pictures just so you understand the extent of the encroachments on the city property. On this side, obviously, you have private property, and then we have 20 feet of city property between these residents and the next public property, or the next private property, excuse me. So you have these pretty extensive rock retaining walls that are in the city property. Oh, come on.
Kelly?
Yes.
So I just want to kind of orient myself. On the right red line, up above the encroached area, is that?
That is right here.
Right there, and is that in Draper?
Oh, this portion, that is the, that is the city boundary, yes.
Okay, so that's the city boundary between Highland and Draper.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Oh, was I just going to say? I forgot. Oh, this is something I also wanted to point out is, so this is the gentleman that's not encroaching at all, and right here you can see there's a property marker, and that's where they cut in. This is from the other side, just so you can get more perspective, this resident has not, or this property has not been encroached on, and then this is just from the other side with those rock retaining walls. Okay. And then this is another one showing the extent of this one. This is actually encroached onto the private property as well. And then this goes further over here, there's some encroachment with a concrete drive. And this is an ownership map that was requested just to kind of show the property ownership of these lots. Just, I'm just going to go west to east, but this was last purchased in 2007, this was the original owner, when it was subdivided. This was last purchased in 2014, the third owner. This was purchased in 2018, second owner, and the next one, 2021, and this is the fourth owner. The next is 2020, and that's the fifth property owner. And then over here, 2021, that's the third property owner. Keep in mind these, this, the 2021 and the 2018 right here are the ones that are not an issue or constraint on this potential trail.
So there are three encroachments then? Is that what you're saying?
There are one, two, three, four.
Four, okay.
Yes, including this one over here. And then going on to the next option, this is an existing option. We have these asphalt trails that go through the Twin Bridges subdivision, and the potential is just connecting to the Pfeifferhorn Trail into Alpine, and then the potential connection through here, which again, just matches their master plan, just connecting over to the east. And then the other idea was just through Beacon Hills Park. We don't have an existing trail here, but this is kind of the idea where it could connect to Pfeifferhorn. I didn't look too much into elevation research, it's just an idea because we have public property there. And this is just matching their existing trail again, all the way north and east. Oh, actually, I think that's my last slide. If y'all have any questions, we can talk about encroachments, whatever you'd like.
The question I had, so we're trying to get over to this trail area in Alpine, and going up to Hogs Hollow, are they going on the east side of the property that's been fenced? Is that the goal, to get up into Hogs Hollow? I mean, I thought the whole goal was here is to get to the trail in Hogs Hollow up into Draper.
That is correct. And so going the Alpine way, we'd have, we would have to go around six, like, or Blue Bison, and we'd be going out this way, like avoiding the private property, and then to the Draper way would be following the PI Pond north to connect.
Can you go to the one that has the encroachment map?
Yes, I will.
So let me kind of, I've talked to Carla Merrill, the Alpine mayor, where you see where it says Alpine. Where you see where it says Alpine, Alpine City owns that property, and you can kinda see the little, the dirt trail area there that kinda goes up on an angle. That is the kinda the Hogs Hollow Trail, and also going up.
Oh, this.
Alpine is planning to build a trailhead right there at that area. So they'll come up and build a trailhead up, almost right where the lettering of Alpine's at. So they're planning to put a trailhead.
Oh, right here is what you're saying.
So Scott, if we were able to get across there, I mean, there's, you know, we can get across to go there to get up to our trailhead up by our retention pond, or we could even follow the red line along to kinda get a trail. We possibly classify that the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, trying to go across there, is that correct? The art, if we, the trail going up is the Hogs Hollow, but the trail going to the west and east would be the Bonneville Shoreline?
I assume so, again, going back to there's like Bonneville Shorelines over here. And so technically, yes, it would bring an overall connection to, based on their vision plan. But, yes.
But I thought the goal here, these options, are to go circumvent the private property, which has been fenced, so it's cut off access to these dirt trails and things up there.
That is correct, yes.
So they go up on the east side of that fenced property if it comes through Alpine, is that right?
Yes.
Whereas our proposal up by the ponds, kind of over on the west side.
Goes to the west, yes, it connects to Draper.
That's, that's, I just wanted to clarify that in my mind.
Our trailhead would connect us back up to the Draper property on the west side, which then they can kinda, there's a whole bunch of trail systems that Draper has, as it goes all up in that area. There's, there's been some questions about why don't we legally do something here? Here we are, we're trying to do some workarounds. And Rob, would you like to address what, what we've looked at legally and where we're kinda at with that?
Certainly, we, as council and staff have looked at that, we've, we've kept our options open. And so we've been, we've looked at potential litigation strategies, claims of prescriptive rights, and similar issues. As we've explored that, the, the issue with litigation is it's, it's hard to unring a bell. Once you start litigation, you, it's hard to unstart litigation. And there's no particular risk in waiting a little bit to explore these other options, see if you can resolve it, usually a lot faster and cleaner through a negotiation. As I understand it, we're still exploring and keeping all of our options on the table. We're just looking at these other ones, for the time being, keeping those other ones at the kind of the back of our head for now.
So what, what I just understood, you're saying, we do have legal options, but we are looking for workaround solutions at this time before we go forth with the legal? Cause once we start legal, then it kinda starts moving down that path. And we're trying to work through if it'd be a temporary solution or a workaround that could be permanent.
Correct.
And the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, just for clarification, that's on the regional trail plan, right? Not just on our city plan?
Correct, the Bonneville Shoreline Trail is a, it, it's on the regional trail plan. It's not, the status of it's a little bit different from city to city. It's, some places it's just been marked as a trail, even though there's no particular right of way associated with it. But it has been a longstanding, existing trail.
So, maybe we can go back to your different options there, let's, just the council, cause we need to kinda, you know, look what, so we have option number one. We do have some hindrance there because we don't have a connection up into Draper. So what we're trying to do is get a, from our trailhead that's there by the pond, we are trying to get a connection up to the Draper property, so that the riders, the bikers, that can get out into that open trail area. What we're hindered here is, we do have a little area, we have to get at least one of the property owners there. And yes, we have made contact, so just, you know, there have been contacts with the property owners, but there has to be something worked out with those property owners, the private property owners, to give us connection. And then we've also ran into some issues there with it being so close to our pond, that we have some safety issues with the DAM, so.
Well, you not only have safety issues, you've got some expenses here.
Correct, this, this is.
Some pretty good expenses.
And there's other options in, with this proposal that we are looking at and trying to work through, cause this still, there's a lot of options here, but this is option number one that's being presented, which I think we can't really move on because we have a lot of unknowns, you know, but, but it is one of the options we're looking at to try to get up to the Draper. We then have option number two, which is the Beacon Hills, which goes up above the Twin Bridges area up there, which we have, the city owns a 20-foot easement across that we could connect, right? Where Alpine's gonna put their trailhead and take it over, to get us over to the road, you know, in that area. But we have some encroachments there, we would have to work with the residents on to resolve before anything can be done there.
And some expenses for the city.
Yeah, cause we'd have to put a trail in.
Well, you'd have to put a trail, but I think you'd also have to retain that, some of, if you took out.
We'd have to work out, so that's what I'm saying, we'd have to work with the residents there. Then we have option number three, which comes down from where we're at the Alpine area, and we go down the Pfeifferhorn Trail, which is on the east side of Highland, you know, the Twin Bridges area. And we are, there's currently a dirt trail already there, so there's already a trail existing that connects to a trail that already exists in Highland. Now, my understanding, Kelly, if you keep going to the west, even, you know, so you go down, if we keep going to the west, there's a trail through that also, that the city owns.
Yeah, just a dirt trail.
But, but it's, I mean, it's passable, it is property the city physically owns, right?
Well, if you look at, the asphalt trail like kinda circles right here, and then you have the dirt trails that run through here. I, I don't.
That would get us over to Angel Gate, that would, if they went down that bottom area, it gets you over to Angel Gate.
Here, one sec, I'm gonna show the next, just to get more. Okay, it's up right here.
And we're talking at, currently, this is option three.
Right, I was just trying to get more of an aerial, so he could see a little more. Are you saying that it crosses further west, just going straight across?
When I drove it, that, there is a dirt little path down through there, and it's still owned by the city, my understanding is.
Okay, I'm like, I did walk, at least going north and south along this whole area, I.
I mean, it gets steep right there where you have it, it, it does go down.
It does go down.
And then comes back up, but there is a little dirt path there.
I believe you.
Well, I'm just saying, so there's, with option three, we could have them come off there, that's still in that Twin Bridges area, or they're right down in, and then they come up on the Angel Gate Road there, that then heads up to our trailhead.
Yes.
I don't know if it helps, once they get our trailhead, where do they go if we don't have it worked out, so. But that's option, then option number four is to come from the Beacon Hills Park and go up along the Pfeifferhorn Trail. Now, my understanding is there's kind of a steepness as we come out of the park. There would be a, a pretty good, you know, area there where some steepness to go up to get to the Pfeifferhorn Trail that just goes all the way up. So, what is it you're looking for from council tonight?
Nathan, this is you.
So basically, we're looking, this is just a discussion item presented to council, looking for, this may be a two-part decision, right? We don't know enough yet with the Bonneville Shoreline to totally address that. The goal is to get people from the, from the parking lot potentially, or an area over to that Alpine piece. So it may be a two-part decision. We may say, okay, we need to use, let's say, I'll just pick one, Route 4 as temporary for now, and then look at other permanent options as it relates to option one or two, depending what the council wants to do. But with weather improving and things like that, we'd like to at least advertise something that says, hey, you can get to where you wanna go by going this way.
So, can I ask a question? I was involved with the Pfeifferhorn Trail in the past, and at one point, the city appropriated $17,500 to Alpine to kinda upgrade that trail. I understand that really didn't happen, and they returned the money to us.
Correct.
But are they willing to do some improvements on the Pfeifferhorn Trail? Could we do some sort of agreement and help finance that? I mean, what, what are we hearing from Alpine?
We haven't approached them on improvements right now. When we were out there, it looked like it was basically roadbase type material, at least for on the north end of it.
It's a place where you'd use roadbase asphalt tailings?
Yeah, it could be, so, but we haven't approached them on any improvements. When that happened, in talking to their planner at the time, they didn't have any specific plans to actually construct a asphalt path. That was one reason that they returned the money.
But that could happen.
It could.
I mean, and we could work with them on that, I would think would be a good thing. So, has anyone else on the council talked anything with the mayor over there? I think you know her quite well, don't you, Brittany?
Yeah, I've, I've talked to her, I don't, I don't wanna, yeah, I don't wanna speak for her, but I would say that they are anxious to have a way to complete the trail, so that people can get back and forth.
Would they welcome involvement of Highland in finishing that?
I, I, I don't wanna speak for her, but I, but yeah, I mean, we've had meetings with Alpine and Draper and MAG, so I think that there are ongoing conversations.
So in these meetings that you've had with Draper, are they interested in helping, or are they just?
I mean, I'm also not gonna speak for them, I think they're glad it's not their problem.
Okay.
I mean.
Scott, we.
But I, I think everybody would like this solved.
With the Draper mayor, I think part of the meeting that we have tomorrow will also help us work through some of the, the things. And there's been some posts on Facebook, I think, from their mayor, expressing what his thoughts were with, with the situation, but.
Well, I, I guess it just seems to me, and you folks have been more involved in this than I have, but it just seems like we're spending a lot of time trying to get the trails on the Highland-Alpine side. But if it, if Draper's not gonna allow any of it, I guess it'd be.
No, I think Draper's amenable for us to go and connect up into Draper.
Up into Draper, okay.
Cause they already have their, their trails there.
And, okay.
So, if it's okay with the council, we have some, probably some residents or those who have kinda, maybe, let's, you know, if they have some, you know, shine some light on, we, we recognize there's, there's fences up there. We recognize there's a property owner that's put those fences. If they have any suggestions of what they've seen as some proposal, I'd like to open it up to them to give some input.
Yeah, I'd love that, cause they're the ones who know which option is best, they're familiar with the area.
So at, at this time, I'd like to open it up, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address this. Is there anyone here that'd like to come up and address, just some options we've been looking at or things you've seen? Please state your name.
Hi, my name's Lane Stephens, I'm an Alpine resident, I'm glad to be here. I'm, I'm looking at these options, but my question, I guess, is only this one, or not this, only the first one really clarified getting into the Draper Trail system. So I can see how I would get from Pfeifferhorn Trailhead over to Angels Gate, but until that question's answered, it seems like.
You're saying option number one, until we get that, we agree, until that one gets solved, we come out of our trailhead, and where do we go? We don't really get up into the Draper area from our trailhead.
Yeah.
That's what you mentioned.
That's my, that's my concern, or my, my question, how that all comes together, so, thank you.
You know what, while, while y'all keep going, I'll pull up Alpine City's master trail plan, cause that's where I found that connection.
Is there anyone else, I'd like to.
My name is Rick Louder, I live at the base of Hogs Hollow Trail up there. And the mayor's quite familiar with our efforts with Blue Bison store the last five years, before you elevated it to such a lofty position, but. I have some strong opinions as to why those fences are shut off right now, and I won't voice those here. But I will say that, to the point relative to legal action, we have organized a group, an LLC, Save Our Trails LLC. We have raised $20,000, we have hired an attorney. So if the city wants to collaborate at all with us on what we're finding, as our options that we might pursue to get those trails opened back up, from that perspective, we'd be happy to work together on that. Which I think that's in the best interest of everybody involved, and that's about all I'll say on that.
Thank you, Rick.
I'd like to complete my thought. I, I appreciate just a couple more moments. But I'm assuming you've had the conversation, you realize how important this is. Let's just look at the high school teams, with somewhere on the order of 700 riders. Hogs Hollow represents a main artery that you can push those riders into the hills. And if we can't get them from here, then they're gonna be driving, or they're gonna be on Suncrest Road. They're gonna be placed in danger, so for, you've got that. You've got thousands of people, literally thousands of people, that are using those hills for equestrian, pedestrian, and bicycle use. And so this is, I hope you view this as an important, you know, issue to resolve, thanks.
Chris Howden again. We use those, I, I use those trails almost every day, even in the wintertime. We also ride our horses there. And so my recommendation or request for consideration would be, if we can have multiple access points, particularly given, as an example, if we forget about it and show up there with our horse trailer, and there are 100 or 200 high school kids, we go, oh, darn it, what have we done? And then we have to try and figure out another way. And so if there's an option to have multiple access points, I think that would be really helpful for us to just disperse traffic in a way that people with different use cases, whether you're a runner, or a biker, or an equestrian, that you, you can sort of pick where you choose to park. And then parking is, is an issue as well, if there's, you know, on a residential street. And I know that not everybody has horses, but it's not a walk in the park to turn around a four-horse horse trailer. And so if the, the current system works perfectly, if we had access by the pond, that Alpine one will be brilliant as well, so that's two cents.
Ooh, Thomas Ritchie. I'm curious, a couple things, what would trigger the legal action? Like, where, where would we need to go to get the legal action going on this? I'm not opposed to that part of it. The other thing is, we were talking with Perry Holmes about possibly down in the Gully. I wondered if any more conversations been done on that.
So on the legal, we want to be, we wanna keep options open. We have some options that we are talking, you know, there are other things that we're negotiating, but because it's in negotiations, we don't, you know, it, it's hard, cause the public are gonna hate, but because it's part of negotiations, we've gotta kinda feather those all the way through before. And I think if we can't get options put together, then we'll look to our legal counsel to say, okay, now what do we do? You bring up Perry Holmes, we can get down from the Angel Gate down into that Perry area, but once again, we still have private property owners that have not got everything put together for a connection that way, from where we've been looking at.
I thought, I was just thinking, that might bypass your, going through your fence up by the pond too, cause it's a little more over to the, over to the, I guess that'd be the east side.
Yeah, one concern is just the time it takes to do that, so if we can find a option that's quicker and meets everybody's needs, then that's what we're trying to do.
No, and even going through Angels Gate isn't a bad option, so, okay. Appreciate that.
Okay, so once again, thank you for those who've come up, make public comment. What is it you're wanting now from the council? What is it you're needing from the council now to help you move forward?
I was just gonna really quickly point out, sorry, I pulled up the Alpine Trails Master Plan, just to answer that gentleman's question. So here you have Pfeifferhorn, and there's that still public property that they'd be bringing the trail over. This is, all the dotted is planned. And so you have the connection coming through here, and then they have another connection to the trail from the road here. And then this square is public property, and this is also public going into Draper. And so that's where that connection would be, just showing the aerial, if the mouse would work. So this is where that trail would come up, you'd have a connection here. Oh my goodness, the mouse would be in so jumpy. And the connection here, and then this goes into the public Draper property with those trails coming up here. So that's just a clarification on how that connection would go.
And that's to the east of the Blue Bison fenced property?
That is east, correct.
Is there, is there any thing the council would like us to look into? As we move for, moving forward, do we want to do temporary alignment as we look at option one? And come back with that, is that something you want us to pursue? Start putting together plans and, and least estimated cost of what that would take?
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested in costs. I mean, there are some advantages to each one of these, but I think costs are an important part as well.
So if we did temporary, the three and four, which are, I guess, temporary, are there costs associated with those ones, or?
Not besides public notification.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So basically, what we need to do is do a temporary right now, decide what we wanna do there, and then from there, we can take a little bit more time. take a little bit more time to do a permanent solution.
Correct.
I think that sounds right.
Nathan, one thing I'm interested in knowing on those temporary solutions is what the impact to the neighborhood would be. The, we had talked about parking, that might significantly impact those neighborhoods with parking and traffic. What would that impact be for those neighborhoods? And I think maybe addressing the elephant in the room is those encroachments. And have we talked to those residents about the possible need that we need that land that belongs to the city? Just so that they are involved and, and know really early on that that might be impactful for them.
Are you asking if we have, or we should?
I'm asking if we have, and if we have not, should we?
I think that's a decision that the council needs to make, uh, as a collective, because it's kinda, how do I, how do I say this? Uh, if there's other options that we wanna pursue, to me, that's more of a permanent option, that's not a temporary one that we can institute today or tomorrow. Uh, we can get a, a different, you know, a different route temporarily, but if that's something we wanna do permanently, I think we need to have some further discussion on that. If we wanna bring those residents in on that conversation, that would be great. But, at the same token, you know, if, if we're not, let's, for example, uh, say the council isn't choo, isn't looking at option two, or, you know, we can get option one to work, and two isn't a need, or something like, you know, whatever. Whatever the scenario is where our option two doesn't become an issue, do we wanna kick a sleeping dog right now, or do we wanna deal with that? In all the encroachment policies that you guys are working on?
I think what you mentioned, Nathan, we need, do you wanna have a policy on encroachment before we approach them? Or do we wanna approach them saying, we, you need to be aware that we're, we're gonna be needing this property before we have our encroachment policy?
And I think the council needs to decide whether we need it or not before we go approach them. That would be my recommendation anyways, I wouldn't do it based on tonight's meeting.
Well, either way, don't we know, need it because that's where the Bonneville Shoreline Trail is supposed to go?
That's where it's showing, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces, and we don't have all the information right now. Uh, there were some other routes potentially up north, if I remember right, Brittany, in that one meeting that we talked about, I can't, but we have to get back into that and so forth, so I don't have.
On the way to further north, like to the north of my neighborhood, and then under Highway ninety-two magically somehow.
Well, yeah, north, more north into Draper than back down.
Yeah. I think the best thing would be to come up with a temporary solution tonight, and then, um, address the long-term possibilities when we have more information. I mean, the, the bottom line is that we've started working on an encroachment policy, and we're gonna theoretically need to figure that out independent of the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, right? Cause it's a policy that we're working on, so, um.
So, like, option number three right now is a work, you can do it, right now it's already in.
Let's do it.
Option four, we have a little bit of a gap coming out of the Beacon Hills Park area, going over the Pfeifferhorn, it's not that they, we'd have to go and look to see how that would really fit, if, you know, there, there might be a little gap there, cause like I say, you could say three and four, you're workaround to get up, that's just getting to the Hog Hollow Trail, doesn't get you anywhere else.
But the problem with option three is you have no parking.
Yeah, the theory would be you park where we are, where the trailhead is, and then use the other pass or sidewalks or whatever to get down and over.
Get down and over, but that's not human nature.
No.
That's why I said a temporary solution, until we can get that permanent solution. Just, you know, let people know, hey, there is a way to access it, um, it's, it's not ideal.
And it's not the only thing that we're doing.
Yeah, but until we can get your ideal solution, this is your temporary one for now.
And, and I support those temporary things, I just worry about the parking, cause people just park up and down the street.
Yeah.
A lot of times, I, I kinda lean more towards option four.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Cause there is a parking lot there, and yes, you're gonna have to do a little bit of connection, but it seems like you at least have some parking there, and I know that residents there won't be happy with that, but I think it's better than having people park up and down their street.
Now, will option three and four work for the equestrians?
Uh, probably not option three, I don't think option three's gonna work for equestrians.
And will option four?
I mean, four is going up to, uh, Durrot Trail.
So, may, maybe what we look at is option number four, I think what you're saying is we wanna advertise one to say this is where you want to start looking for connection, if you're trying to get up to the Hog Hollow area, if they come to number four and use our parking area there at Beacon Hills Park, they can get up to the Hog Hollow area and, and build an access.
Now, the, the other one is to say, hey, we want to look at four, can you answer the questions on equestrian, you know, parking, et cetera, and we go back and get some more information for you and bring it back, if you want us to do that. Or three, you know, to answer Councilmember Peterson's, I don't know the exact impact on the neighborhood, and we can try to make some assumptions.
Yeah, I do worry about making a really quick decision if we don't know what that impact might be. I mean, for example, we, we just talked earlier about traffic and children in the neighborhood, and is that going to increase safety risk for residents in that neighborhood? It sounds like there's a large number of people using this trail, which we love, which we all support, and I certainly support coming up with both a temporary and a permanent solution. I just wanna make sure we understand the impact before we make the solution to the other areas, and then, if we have a fair number of equestrians, and this doesn't work for them, then what would our solution or, or suggestion be for, for those folks?
Well, your best solution for the equestrian is option one. But we've gotta work out a lot of negotiation and costs and all those other things. And I, that's probably the ideal solution, but it's not a good temporary solution till we work out all these other details.
Right, right. And of course, we should take all of that into consideration. But just wanna make sure that we have all of the information we need to make a sound decision.
If you can see on the map, that also lets you know on option four.
This is option four.
Yeah.
Looks like there's this little bridge right here, as well.
Oh, you can get two horses across that.
Don't know how sturdy that is.
You know, if I was, you know, as an equestrian, the best place for them to go is could be where the Alpine head, head, head would be. Cause, you know, they're not gonna probably wanna come here and ride across, they need to probably go up at the Alpine side at, at the top of Pfeifferhorn lane and kinda come out, now that gets a little steep there, but maybe they can get up into that area to build their, you know, ride their horses, get up there. And that might be work with Alpine to try to smooth that road, they get up, and they can kinda maybe go up and park, and then they can get up, up there in the Hog Hollow area.
Maybe we could negotiate to help with the parking lot or something. Cause that seems like a better solution. And have the other trail hook into it, but.
So, some of this, we wanted to let the public know that, yes, we are aware of the concern, we are trying to be addressing, we're looking at a lot of options. It sounds like we need just to have a further conversation with Alpine to see what their plan is here at their head, you know, here at this, uh, the Pfeifferhorn Trailhead. Does the staff have any direction, I mean, are we saying we want them to try to come down as option four is what we're encouraging, or we wanna hold off until we get more information?
I'm leaning towards option four, where we look and negotiate option one, that's kinda what I'm thinking.
Cause we'd advertise it, what we're saying is this is where we say our temporary until we can get something negotiated.
So, what we can do is we can go in, we'll go in and look at option one, we'll see, we'll follow up with the safety folks, and find out what we'd actually have to do, if anything, and what costs would be associated with that.
Okay.
With any cost that would be associated on the north end. Uh, we'll also look at, uh, number four in actually getting a path from Beacon Hills parking lot essentially to Pfeifferhorn and see what that would entail, and then we'll bring that back to you.
That sound good for council?
Yeah, but I think we also need to coordinate with Alpine, because it seems ideal to have a parking lot up at the top there if they want to use that.
Correct.
As an access point, yeah.
You can actually, right at the, so, Kelly and I went out right there, you know, left.
What?
Remember where we drove, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, so.
You can actually drive.
You can get in there, and it's, it's fairly, you don't need a four-wheel drive.
You can't, you can't get up this way.
No, you can't go up.
It's way too steep.
From there over, you can't go up.
There's a curb cut here. Which, this is a private lot right here, by the way, as well.
That's what I'm saying, I know there was some private properties there. We'll just have to talk to Alpine about this specific area right there. Thank you, let's go ahead and let's move on to our discussion items, we have our communication item number nine, a mayor and council and staff communication items. I believe we have our number nine A, which is hobby breeder ordinance, I think we have Brent Wallace, our code enforcement officer.
Is he code enforcement or code compliance? You're compliance, right?
Code compliance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time at this late hour, I realize this is kind of a housekeeping item, and, um, if I'm a little groggy, this has passed my bedtime, so, uh, appreciate your time. This came up because, uh, get, when I get complaints, I need to go to the codes and see which codes apply, if any, and then, uh, see how we can enforce that code, um, so that the, uh, parties will come into compliance. So, we ended up having a couple complaints regarding, uh, dog breeders or barking dogs. And when I looked into our code, um, which is six point twelve point zero one zero, to say the least, it was a very unique, uh, code, and, um, I considered, in my opinion, somewhat verbose. And so, I went to their surrounding cities and find, to find out what they're doing, and, um, none of them had heard of a hobby breeder's license. That allows, uh, residents to have five dogs. And in their opinion, five dogs meant you had a kennel, and that would mean you couldn't put that in a residential area. So, what is read is on, on this would be, um, in my opinion, maybe to, um, to be eliminated and, uh, simplify so that it, um, the ordinance is clear. That, that, that particular code requires that animals be registered as purebred dogs. And in this era of designer dogs, uh, purebred dogs has almost become something that isn't, uh, relevant anymore. So, uh, it allows five-dog limit versus a two-dog limit for everybody else. It gives exceptions to show dogs, which is in nobody else's ordinances. And then, had a vaccination requirement which, um, is not current or supported by current veterinarian, uh, the veterinarian community. So, what is in blue on there would be words that would be added to clarify it, so I ended up calling two veterinary clinics, and I ended up calling the North Utah Valley Animal Shelter to find that there was concurrence on what, when dogs should be vaccinated. At four months, and at one year, and then three years afterwards was the consensus from those three sources. We've covered, let's see, um, okay, so, designer breeds are what are making this pretty much unenforceable, because everybody's just breeding different breeds of dogs together to come up with something that can sell for thirty-five hundred dollars a dog. So, uh, have we got another, another slide there? These are the cities that I went to and found out what they are, uh, supporting in their codes, and it's either two or three dogs, one litter that needs to be sold by the time they're four months old, and then a different, uh, things on cats. And it looks like, uh, Kelly eliminated when I put, question mark by cats by, uh. I'm not a cat person, so. I was questioning whether we should allow any cats, you know? But anyway, um, I can't go in and try and enforce a code if it's ambiguous, if I think it's unenforceable. So, I need some, we just need some guidance here, and so, I've given some, some, uh, options, and these options are to have three dogs, one litter up to four months, and then, oh, there it is, there's the question mark by the cats, excuse me. Uh, remove hobby breeder's license completely, remove transient and show dog exemption, update vaccination requirements. And the bottom line of all this is, I don't think anybody cares how many dogs somebody has, they care if they're a nuisance, they care if they're barking. I bred dogs for about twelve years, I had three dogs, two females and a male. Nobody ever complained about my dogs because they didn't bark, and they didn't mess on other people's yards. So, I think that what we need to maybe look at is what the strongest point here is, that we have an enforceable, uh, ordinance for, for noise, for nuisance. When I talk about maybe our ordinance being a little verbose, if you look at Lehigh's dog barking ordinance, it is, uh, one, one sentence, then if you look at Highlands, it is, got a lot of legalese, and, um, anyway, you can just tell by this, the difference in those two ordinances, uh, and we do have some things included in ours that Lehigh doesn't, but when I go out to explain this to someone, how they're, they're breaking an ordinance and what they need to do to come into compliance, it'd be a lot easier if it's one sentence longer than if it's three or four paragraphs, and I can't even understand it when I read it myself. So. Did I say more than I supposed to? Sorry. I just love your description of our not-so-great code. I know that Erin always rolls the dice when she wants me to come up and say anything, because she doesn't.
Brent doesn't need this job, and sometimes you can tell.
Please stay.
All this talk about dogs and horses, I wanna check out, I don't like pets, I'm like, ooh.
But, but your daughter has a horse.
Don't, I don't wanna talk about her horse.
Okay, so Brent, what you're looking for the council, some direction on, do we wanna rewrite the, the code about dogs and cats ordinance? If we do, is there suggestion on how many dogs, the litter, and if we are gonna allow any cats?
Yes, yes, that'd be a top flip of a coin on the cats.
I have a lot of cat stories.
Okay, so then.
We gotta think of the mice, though, so maybe a few cats allowed.
They actually are great for, if they're, if they're in the neighborhood and not mine, they are great for mice, they do roll with control.
What's the deal with the chicken embryo?
Yeah, what is that?
That's the, uh.
That's the part that needs to be eliminated, because, uh, that just has no relevance to what is current standards for vaccinating dogs for rabies.
Low egg passage, chicken embryo, I'm going, what?
I like your solutions, and I like Lehigh's barking dog ordinance and nuisance of animals.
Now, one thing that is, is good in our ordinance, uh, what I found in this, in this, uh, job is a lot, you get a lot of tit-for-tat between neighbors, and it's he said, she said, and they start going back and forth. This ends up, our ordinance requires that two people from separate residences complain, so you can't get one person that is vindictive against a neighbor. That can be a problem, because a lot of people don't like, don't wanna be complained, even though it's anonymous, and I've stuck by that a hundred percent. If, uh, the mayor goes over to Councilman Ball and says, I don't, uh, appreciate the three cars you've got parked in your front lawn with the tires off, and they've been there for longer than a month, and they're violating this ordinance.
I'm working on those cars.
Okay, all right, that's, that's exactly what.
I'm making progress on it.
Uh, if then, you, if Councilman Ball says, it's my yard, I can do what I want, then when I show up at your yard two weeks after that and tell you you're violating this code, you know where the complaint came from, right? You know it came from whoever talked to you two weeks before. So, people are very reticent to come forward and make complaints. I've had two ex-mayors have called me about situations, and I said, are you making a formal complaint? Cause I have to have a formal complaint, and they said, no, I don't wanna do that, because I'm afraid then I'll upset my neighbor. So, getting people to complain is actually a hard, a hard thing to do for people to do. But I think I would lean in favor of ours, it requires two people to make a complaint. You said you do favor having the two-person complaint? For, for this particular thing, yes, because then it can't just be one person that's got a, uh...
For, for this particular thing, yes, because then it can't just be one person that's got a, is being vindictive or something, or... So that was something that is part of our ordinance, is the written affirmation by two persons having separate residences. Have to make a complaint.
Mr. Mayor?
I really like that you're updating this, and I like your suggestions. I definitely think cats should be allowed. I have a cat.
I'm, I just, I just...
I probably won't have one again, but they should be allowed. But I'm wondering, and I like the barking dog ordinance, I'm just wondering about adding something for nuisance animals. I know in my neighborhood, the dogs gone wild. And, you know, so for me, barking isn't so much of a problem, but just random free dogs and a lot of them. And, and so a lot of neighbors have talked to me about this. And when I say a lot, it's, it's quite a neighborhood thing, but I don't think it's just my neighborhood.
Do we have an animal control officer at this time?
That's Lone Peak.
We were just meaning to be a yes or no.
Since he probably has a loaded gun, I'll take that question back.
I tell people to call Lone Peak.
So we had a dedicated animal control officer until December 31st of this last year, and she retired. So we're currently in the process of looking at how to replace her position. In the meantime, officers do take animal control complaints, and we'll pick up dogs. We will pick up cats if they're in traps.
I heard Brent was available halftime.
I don't know if he wants to do that.
Thank you, Chief.
You're available halftime.
Oh, yeah.
So let's give Brent some direction. On animals, right now, you're saying that we allow up to five dogs, correct? Well, if you get this, so someone can apply for a Hobby Breeder's License and have five dogs. And I don't think that that... If they don't have a Hobby Breeder, it's only two, is that right? Yes. So as a, you know, as we're looking to write the ordinance, are we looking as two dogs, five dogs? Where would you sit on, and we'll look at dogs, litters, and then we'll go to cats? How many dogs would you recommend that we put? And what you're recommending is we pull away from this Hobby Breeder's License that we...
But they could still have litters.
Yes, they can keep those up to four months, yes. How many dogs for how, do we need to look at lot size for the number of dogs, or does it not matter? I, I think it doesn't matter if they're not barking. It's all about barking, and it's all about running loose, that's what it's about. So I'm, I'm saying three, because that kind of ends up, it ended up, the average was like two and a half, so I put down three. Can the council support three?
I like three.
Okay, three, and we're okay with one litter up to, you said up to four months, is that right?
Right.
Now, on number of cats? We have nothing about cats in our ordinance at all.
Maybe you should, I don't know, maybe three?
So three?
If you're a cat person rather than a dog person?
Yeah, three.
Yeah, if you allow three dogs, probably allow three cats.
Okay.
Can't discriminate.
How many husbands?
We won't touch that one.
And the vaccination requirement, I think, is really just, we should go with what the veterinarians have said. It sounds like you've done your homework.
Four months, one year, and then three years thereafter.
Right.
Sounds very...
Hold on, do they get one at four months, and they get one at a year, and then they get one at three years? Twelve months after the four months, so they'll get one at 16 months, and then three years thereafter for the rest of their life.
And, and we really should encourage the vaccinations and the licensing, especially the dogs and different things, because if that revenue goes into the Animal Shelter Board... What, what did I say funny?
Vaccines, I'm going, we're going to require the dogs to be vaccinated, but I'm not going to be, I'm sorry.
I know, it's, it's harder on cats, but you know, but it's a discussion item. But I was just saying, the money that comes from licensing and, and different things for the animal shelter, it cuts down the amount of money we have to pay as a city. So, you know what I'm saying, so, and it's good to have dogs licensed, especially.
Correct, I, so what, so, yeah. So what you're saying, if the dog, every dog that's out there in the city needs to have a license, but then also what you're saying is, part of that, would it be part of the license that guys show that they have a vaccine for the dogs?
That's always kind of...
Yeah, that should, that's always been the case, it was just ours is very scrambled, the description on it.
But I, I think we should really strongly encourage that.
So how about a canine vaccine passport? They cannot go into public places without a vaccine passport. Am I mocking a public figure?
It's getting late, we are past 10, you can see why I have to stop that.
Can I provide a little bit of clarification on the vaccine and the license? You cannot obtain a license through the Utah North Valley Animal Shelter without the vaccination.
Right.
Okay.
That's one of the same.
So, so they're tied together, they'll help enforce it for us?
Yeah, that, the only way you can get a license is there's a current vaccination.
But what percent of animals do you think in Highland have been licensed?
I think they need to license their dog.
A very small percentage.
I'm guessing we're probably, that's a good question, probably 50 to 60%. We have people coming to license their animals, probably two or three a day. Some that have lapsed, some that are new. We do a pretty good job, but I mean, there are a lot more animals here than what we know that we have.
So Brent, do you feel like you have some good direction to work with Rob to kind of come up with an ordinance on that? Sure. So three, one, three, three, three dogs, a litter, and three cats. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a quick comment?
Yes, you may.
All kidding aside, I, I object in all areas of ordinances in the city to having anonymous complaints. I don't like that. I, I think that, I think it makes it too easy to file a complaint if someone's not responsible for the complaint. So if you want to make a complaint, I think you should first go to your neighbors and talk about it, try to work it out, and then if you have to, file the complaint. It's just too easy to do things anonymously. And we could go into a philosophical discussion of that, but I'll just leave it at that. I just think it's too easy to file a complaint.
So Brent, how often do we have anonymous complaints usually? Well, that's what virtually all of them are, I treat all of them as being anonymous, even though I know who all of them are. And when I go and talk to people, some, the first thing they say is, "Well, who told you, who complained? That's anonymous." "Well, I know who it is." "Well," oftentimes they do, and I say, "Don't jump to conclusions, you might be wrong, and you'll have bad feelings about a neighbor that are unjustified."
Yeah, but we don't know what the motivations are, and I, I appreciate the fact that you have two written respondents because that would help to eliminate whatever malfeasance or whatever...
So, so maybe we had asked, so, we know, when they put a complaint, we know who the individual is, we're just not disclosing... That's right. Who gave the complaint. That's right. So we would know who the two complaints are, we're just not disclosing to the neighbor, "Hey, it was Tim and Kurt that actually complained against you." If, if, if you did away with the anonymous complaints, you would do away with my job instantly.
Instantly, okay.
You would do away with any code compliance, because I bet 80%, if you said you have to divulge who you are, 80% of the complaints would disappear.
And, and I understand that it's, it's a balancing act between what I'm saying and what you're saying. I, I understand that, and I appreciate the fact that you've incorporated language that attempts to kind of reconcile those two points of view, so I, I do appreciate that. The other thing is, it's so, I have the same objection that I had with the noise ordinance. When you say, "Discomfort to any person of normal sensitivity," what does that mean? Or, "Frequent or long-continued noise."
You could have a chihuahua whining, and you would not be able to pick it up with a decibel meter, but if that's outside 12, 13 feet away from your bedroom window, that would be really annoying.
It would be hard to quantify and say...
But it takes two.
It takes two, and I, and that's what I think is the beauty of what you've done here. You're making an effort to reconcile the two. And I appreciate the fact that you're adding fowls here, because we had a neighbor that had a rooster, and it was, you know, doing his thing at 5:00 in the morning.
I don't think you can have roosters in the city.
Well, it was making...
And in certain places.
It was in the city.
Oh.
And I'm just saying, I thought it was a solution, but I don't think anyone would like it, and it's a city-sponsored rotisserie. No, I'm glad you included foul, foul in that, so.
Is there any other direction we need to give to Brent?
I think, I think this is good.
Okay, thank you, okay, our next discussion item is the survey. I believe that is you, Erin, is the city survey?
Yes, sir, so you guys are all, that way, yeah. You guys are getting a copy of the first, well, not the first, draft of the survey. And so we took the comments that we received from council and the direction as far as question possibilities, and here is, is the first go. One thing to point out, it's too many, well, if we intend to stick to what we've done in the past, just one page, try and keep it simple to get more respondents, it's too many questions. We're up at 25 at the moment, the lot, the most I've ever fit on a survey is 20. It depends year to year, just depending on the length of the questions. And Kelly, I think I made enough copies if residents want some.
So let me, let me ask you, are you planning to maybe go through this, or would you like to just have council look through this and then give comments back?
I think it's hard for you, I know that you cannot wordsmith, I don't think it's a good idea for us to wordsmith this in a public, you know, in an open meeting like this, that's just too hard of a thing to ask. If you, I, I kind of was gonna do just a high level and get some initial feedback, but then allow you some time to fully digest this and get me some more in-depth feedback, was my thought. So normally, we give people a month, so the goal is, ultimately, we're, we're gonna shoot this out in the March newsletter and give everyone a month to complete, so we normally ask for addresses. I do not track them, I don't try to say, "This person complained about this." I really just, it's really kind of just a default to see, number one, if we're getting too many from the same household, and number two, just, just to try and make sure that it's just Highland residents responding, so, kind of a gateway. We normally ask, so number two, you know, a quality of life, I, I don't, you know, it's not a ton of information, but we ask it year to year, just to kind of track and see how things are doing. Number three is a big, long list of all, you know, we try to quantify all of the services that the city provides, and how are we doing in each of these? It's kind of interesting to see how we track year over year in, in these areas. Like, for example, roads is one of our lowest, but it has increased quite a bit since we've instituted the road fee and the road plan. Number four, again, it's a similar, every year we've asked, well, most years we've asked this question, see how we're doing as different staff and elected groups over time, see what the residents think of us. And then we ask a couple of different tax and fee questions, or we have in the past. So number five and six, right now, one related to property taxes, one related to the public safety fee, as that's been a potential point of discussion for this upcoming budget. And I will say with number five, some of the options have been included, not, without council really saying, yes, we think, or thinking strongly about doing this, but more as kind of a gauge against some of the other ones that you might be thinking about. There's a couple of questions in there about fibers, number seven and eight, that I drafted based on feedback we heard from council. And then some parks questions. So specifically in relation to kind of rec elements you would like to see in new parks, or in parks, excuse me. And then number 10, the playground elements you want to see. And as we did talk about, 10 would probably be one we'd be willing to cut, because we are gonna do that neighborhood-specific as we put in new playgrounds with parks tax money. Open space, so this was my attempt, and this is a very difficult question to write, and to not try and be loaded and not try and be biased. So this was my best attempt at an open space encroachment question on number 11, but I certainly would welcome feedback on that one as well.
I have, I have a question on 11.
Yes.
Because I'm just wondering why we're asking this question when the land does not belong to those that have encroached? So it seems like an odd question for us to be asking if they support us enforcing.
You're absolutely right in that the city has every right to do that, but as you know, for a number of reasons, the city has chosen not to for years. So if I understood council right in the last meeting, it was a question, an encroachment question, you guys wanted to ask an encroachment question, so this is the one that I, I drafted, but if you have suggestions, I'm more than open to them.
I, I think it's a good question, because the encroachment question is very complex. I mean, you can be barely black and white about it, but it's not been black and white, because the city hasn't made it black and white. So it'd be interesting to see what residents as a whole, because a lot of the residents have encroached. And so, you know, it'd be nice to see public support saying, gee, we did this survey, and everybody says, hey, get rid of the encroachment, it makes it easier to come up with a policy and enforce it, I think. I just think it's a good question, personally.
As a caveat to that, I did include, in our demographic questions, I asked the question whether or not you live in open space, just because I think that will impact your answer to this question, as it did with the Wimbledon question we asked last year. And a question about the open space fee. A council member asked about lot sizing, and so number 12 is that question. It's one we resurrected from a previous survey. It's one in my mind, I, I'm not, I feel like we could potentially cut, just because I'm not sure the purpose of it, or if, you know, what are we going to do with this information, so... But please let me know if you feel otherwise or strongly about that. Councilmember Rodella, number 13 was my attempt to, so you, you wanted kind of a big, you know, what should we be focusing on, what are our big picture items? And while the question itself came from a previous year's survey, it's actually, I tried to update the options to what council, or sorry, what staff has heard from the mayor and council more recently, as things that you guys want us to focus on, potentially. And so I tried to update those options, but if there's more or less, or if you have questions, of course, let me know there.
I just, my only concern, when I saw 13, I got a circle three, and I'm going, oh, there's a lot of options.
There's a lot of options, but at the same time, I, you know, and maybe we could add, maybe it could be four or something. But as we've talked about, there's also limited capacity, right? And so really, what, what do you want us to do? And I think we narrowed it to two years, thinking that we would have all of you for the next two years, so... A couple of questions about recreation. So private, private... And then the library asks us a couple of questions, so they're, you know, exploring, okay, if we were able to get a grant to do some, some new equipment, kind of what things do you want to see? And then what kind of programs do you want, are the two questions that they're asking. And then the remainder are demographic questions. And some of them, actually, I do think that we could cut, while we've asked them for years, 18 and 19, it's kind of interesting to see, you know, and we often get a, hey, people really want to live in Highland the rest of their lives type of a response. I don't know if it really is useful, and if we're tight on space, there were ones I would recommend cutting. And then the others I would recommend keeping. We use them essentially to, to double-check, okay, are we getting a responsive, or a representative sample from our, on our survey respondents? We compare it to census data and then also to voter data, when we ask the, what area of Highland do you live? And we break that out by precincts. But like I said, I'm happy to take, if you have any gut initial reactions, happy to take those tonight, but I haven't thought about a timeline, and I can email you that, council, as to when I would need your final comments, so that we could get everything put together for next month's newsletter.
Do you want us to focus on trying to cut it down a little bit, to be more around 20 questions?
Yeah, I, I need to, I, I can't, unless you want a longer survey, which I worry means less responses, then yes, we have to cut about five questions.
My counsel, if you're going to look at a question and go, okay, if we got the information back, what would we do with it? If you go, we wouldn't do anything with it, then maybe that's not a question to ask. Is that you're going, okay, we already... We're not going to do anything with that information. So, that's just... Okay, so we'll just follow back up with you, Erin, on that, is that correct?
Yeah, and I will get you a timeline. I'm sorry, I'm not prepared with that, so...
There's no other questions on that? We do have another discussion I'm to add, and I believe that's you, Nathan. It is going to be number nine C, Highland Glen Ducks.
Yes, I'll actually turn that over to Andy.
And we're talking about the quack-quacks. So, we've talked about dogs and cats, now we're talking about ducks.
Night of all sorts of animal discussions. So, just real quick, wanted to get some input from the council. As many of you know, the later part of the summer, or last summer, we had to post a sign that, you know, swimmers were advised as far as getting in Highland Glen Pond because of the water quality. The hope had been that this winter, we'd have a good winter, and we'd have enough water coming down the river, that we'd be able to flush the water in the pond. As of yet, we haven't been able to have enough runoff out of the Kang and to be able to get water to the pond, because the winter water from the pond comes from the adjacent river, and that'll cycle through the pond and back out to the river. And so, we're working on getting some fresh water just before irrigation season. Been talking to the irrigation companies, et cetera, seeing what we can do. But another contributor, or multiple contributors to part of our problems are the ducks that we have up there. Now, it's my understanding that we are able to contact the DWR and ask them to come and help us remove some of the ducks that aren't migratory. Some of them are migratory, they land on the open water, and things that aren't froze and et cetera, and there's nothing we can be able to do there, but there are a number of ducks up there that are regular residents, so to speak. Now, it's a double-edged sword, so to speak, because we would like people to be able to swim in the pond and keep the water as fresh as we can, and yet, there are a number of people that go up there and feed the ducks. That's part of their routine as well, and so, it's kind of a sensitive issue. But as we look to try to get water that people can swim in, part of that equation for how to, you know, how to address that is to reduce the number of ducks that are there. So, we wanted to get a little feedback from the council as to your thoughts, whether we leave the ducks, or whether we try to call the DWR and see if they'll help us with a little bit of removal heading into, hopefully, that season when we get a little fresh water.
So, on a given day... I mean, I was up... We were walking around the pond the other day, and there were a lot of ducks there. How many ducks would you estimate are in that pond routinely?
Most times when I go there. I mean, we were there the other day with Councilmember Peterson, and I don't know, I would guess there was at least eighty ducks, I would guess, in what we saw. I mean, they're pretty tough to count, but there was a number of them there. You know, they don't hold still in line up very well for me to count them, but...
Well, I'm just asking for an estimate.
That's just my guess.
Actually, we counted eighty-six.
Did you really?
No.
I never asked if you did, that's wonderful, but...
What you're looking for is feedback, is should we...
Yeah, feedback, you know.
Do we thin the ducks down and call DWR?
Yeah.
And are you looking for a certain number of ducks to keep down there?
No, what I'm told is that, and, you know, I have experienced this other than just as a local resident, but I'm told that after Easter, that a number of... Yeah, that the population kind of gets refilled. A number of families that got ducks for Easter and had a little fun with them, the ducks find their way to the pond or dropped off. And so, but yeah, I mean, that's... We're really looking for a little feedback. Is that something the council wants us to do? Or do we want to wait and just put some fresh water in there and see how we do? Because it's going to take a little while to get things lined up with the DWR, right? We can't call them tomorrow and say, hey, can you come Thursday? It's going to take a little while.
Would they take... Is there a cost to do that? And do they take them to like a bird refuge, or do they... Do you know what they do with them?
I don't think there's a cost to us, but I don't want to commit what they do with them, because I don't know.
Okay, it's kind of the whatever.
I'm not sure.
All I know is I'm really hoping the pond is cleaned up by next winter so I can participate in the fire department's ice rescue training. Totally participating next year, if the pond is clean. Yes, that's right. It was the water quality.
So, are you in favor of having some ducks removed?
Yes.
Yes. We got one, yes. Any others in favor of having the ducks removed?
There's a lot of ducks there.
I go there kind of every other Sunday to feed the duck, the ducks during the summertime. My kids love it, and I am absolutely in favor of having the ducks removed.
That's because they will come back.
Some of them... You're not removing all of them, you're just going to thin...
I don't think they can get all of them, especially if they're migratories, and as I say, Easter kind of replenishes them.
And we've got two, is there a third?
I'm in favor of removing ducks, skunks, and rattlesnakes.
And the bunny rabbits.
I don't think you can touch rattlesnakes, but that's...
And a dog.
So, we've got your direction that's moved forward then. Okay, council, as we look at our upcoming meetings, we have a work session next Tuesday at 7:00 PM. We will not go past ten. If it is, the meeting's over. I'm just saying, that is... So, we have a work session next Tuesday, 7:00 PM, with a hard stop time of ten. We have a Lone Peak Public Safety meeting. I guess that was just me, because we have the Lone Peak Public Safety meeting at 7:30 the next morning. We have a city council meeting on the fifteenth of February, and then we also have a planning commission on February 22nd. Any other dates we need to be aware of?
Oh, but one quick question on the fifteenth. We would like Fred Philpott to come and discuss open space model and things with you. I'm wondering if you'd be available to start a work session early that night.
And that's in two weeks.
On the fifteenth? Are you talking six or 6:30, six?
Either one. I mean, we can go from 6:30 to 7:30, for example, or whatever, or six to seven. I just want him to have plenty of time to talk. If we end early, great.
Tim, what's kind of your... Is 6:30 better for you, or can you make six, or... I mean, that way, we just know where we're kind of... Because I think that's going to be a heavy discussion.
Yeah.
So, six o'clock on the fifteenth?
Mayor, can I bring up one thing before we...
Sure.
Before we adjourn? And this is kind of from Lone Peak Safety, but I'm having a lot of residents talk to me about burglaries in their neighborhoods, houses being broken into, cars being broken into. I know I've heard several out of Hidden Oaks, Mystic Cove. I'm just wondering, do we know what's going on? We had a fellow with a clipboard come to our house, wanting to come in and check our water. And my wife wouldn't let him in, but I think he was casing our house. So, there's something going on here, and I'm wondering if there's been a lot of reports, or this is just kind of anecdotal stuff I'm hearing.
And I can say the same in my neighborhood. In fact, my son from out of town was here for my daughter's wedding, and their car was broken into and everything, and it was stolen.
The car was stolen?
No, just the stuff in the car.
In the car.
You know, there's kind of two, a couple of things going on here. With the advent and the moving forward of social media, that stuff is more prevalent than it used to be in the past. People are posting things online, and so, it gets out, and people are more aware of what's happening. And that's a good thing. It's a good thing that we're aware of these things that are happening in our neighborhoods, because people take, tend to take more precautions. I'll be really quick. I haven't looked, and I haven't been made aware of... Nothing's come up on my radar that it's pervasive, and it's something that we're having issues with. But I can look into that and report back to you on if we're having...
I think that'd be interesting, because it's interesting that they're reporting it to the city council, but not to the police department.
Well, I'm not saying it doesn't get reported to the police department. I don't see every report that comes through. That's all I would do all day long if I...
It might be nice to see if we've had a spike, or if it's... Unfortunately, we've had break-ins throughout the many years.
Yeah, and that's what I'm referring to, is not that it's not being reported, it's just not getting to my level. Typically, if we're having a rash in a particular area, that stuff will come to my attention. What I'm saying is that has not come to my attention over the last couple, three, four weeks, so...
Scott, you brought about people knocking on the door trying to do a water quality test. The city actually put something on their Facebook. Was it last week?
Seems so, and it went out in the newsletter. It was likely a solicitor, actually. People wondered if it was actually us, so we put out... We wrote an article of what to expect when the city comes to ask. And if it's a solicitor, you can always ask for his bat, his or her badge, and if they don't have one, then tell them to go get licensed.
I think it's safe to say, as a general rule, if you don't know somebody, don't invite them to your house, because typically, people that are doing that, not... The bad guys are doing that are casing your residents for what's in there. So, yeah, it's, as a general rule, if I don't know you, you're not coming to my house. I actually don't like them coming to my door, but it happens.
Are there any other discussion items that need to come before the council? From the reporting and anything? I'll take a motion adjourned.
So, moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.